Let me ring her up.
Yeah, I'll make sure I do that, too.
Hey, before we get started, I have a complaint. There's one person sitting up here that called a travel on my daughter. And I want, I want some satisfaction right now. What do you think you're doing?
Think of all the calls that I didn't call.
How dare you? How dare you?
Everybody knows that Barry's daughter does not violate any basketball violation rule.
She made the shot, too.
All right, good morning, everyone. We will start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I find it really hard to progress right now. It's hard to call like, you know, stuff like travel. It's, it's just weird. I look at those like, no. Say, you're, I mean, goofy, so it's okay.
We, uh, do we have any changes to the agenda or additions or subtractions?
Mr. Chair, I got information late yesterday, and I would like to add, under the Administrator, and Steve Scoop can certainly come in and explain or answer any questions.
Okay.
You have a memorandum in front of you that I placed. It's memorandum, memorandum fraction for regional planning for demolition waste.
Okay, so we'll add that to number five under your report. Is there any other additions to this agenda? All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Erica, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Barry. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, minutes from January 21st, do we have any corrections to the minutes?
I just have one premarital change on page four. Swanston spelled wrong. I don't know if you care, that matters, but it's not that.
Yep. I noticed that one.
That was the only thing I had.
Carrie, did you notice that? I noticed that one.
I would just let you guys do the question.
I just want you to know that I noticed. Um, anybody else?
So I didn't have any.
On the same page, page four, it says, right at the bottom, it says, being no further business, Board Chair Okerson. I don't think he was here. I don't think he was here, so it'd be Board Chair Meyer.
He just got used to avoiding that.
Good catch.
Are there not any other, any other corrections or changes to the minutes?
Nope.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from January 21st. Motion by Phil, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Erica. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Uh, consent agenda, do we have anything in the consent agenda that anybody would like to pull out?
How are we, can we ask just some basic questions here, or do we pull them out and put them in a different spot?
Usually we pull them out and we put them in the commit, and we decided to put them under the County Administrator's Report. Is that correct, Carrie?
Yes.
Uh, item two and item seven, I just had an additional, probably, simple question, but.
We, we can, well, let's do it right now. Go, go item number two.
So item two, the charitable gaming, gaming at Hotel Shoreham, is that brand new this year? Or is that just, is that ongoing?
Mary, would you like to answer that?
You know, you have to, for each, each raffle, you have to get a new one.
A new perfect.
So if you get a ongoing one, that's for the, like, pull tabs, but for each raffle, for each event, you need a new one. And, I mean, every event. So, Cormoran Lions get one for the spring sale, like, you know, the, and then they get one in the fall for boat. I mean, so you.
Okay, so, so the Detroit Lakes Youth Hockey Association at Hotel Shoreham, that, that's a one-time raffle?
I believe this one is a, is this one a one-timer, or? This, this one is a one.
Is this the first year? Oh, okay, all right, I was just wondering.
They flip, they switch every once in a while. I know the Cormoran Sportsman's Club lost one site and another group is coming in there to take that. So, I mean, they do flip.
I mean, they've always had pull tabs, or so it's probably a renewal, but.
Okay, that's, that's enough. Um, item seven, the letter of support for Lutheran Social Services. I remember reading a few years ago, Lutheran Social Services, didn't they go out of business? Or was that in North Dakota?
That was in North Dakota.
That was in North Dakota.
And the Lutheran Social Services in Minnesota, must be?
Yeah, Lutheran Social Services has been in Detroit Lakes here for many, 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 many years. And they, and it's a little different than the Lutheran Social Services that you're thinking of. I think you're thinking of the one that did, like, refugee.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, the Lutheran Social Services here primarily provides mental health services.
I did not know that, but now I do, thank you.
Does anybody else have any?
Well, just to comment on that, I, and I, so when, sometimes when you see those, like, Lutheran Social Services, and you hear the, the discussions, you know, at the national level, you, you want to make sure that, you know, those, you know, because that was, there was just some discussion on cuts and, and, but, you know, this one's a local and it's supporting. This one's just apply, for them to apply for a grant to get funding to help our people here. So, I mean, I looked pretty closely at that one, too, thinking, ah, is this one, is this something that we should, you know, be, be going forward with? But I, I thought it was reasonable, so.
I just want to clarify one thing about the consent agenda, too. We decided to, if we have stuff we need, Department Head to come in and discuss, that's why we decided if we would do that, we'd move them to the Commissioner, County Administrator's Report. But if we can discuss it ourselves and answer the questions, then.
So going forward, if I've got questions on the consent agenda, I should let you know?
No.
No, 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 no.
You can certainly do it here, you have the option to pull it.
Yeah, you can pull.
I'll consent to it for the discussion.
Okay.
If you're not comfortable with it.
But if we can't get the questions answered here, we need the Department Head, then we'll put it on the agenda blower, under Carrie's report, and then that Department Head can come in and explain. Is there any other consenting agenda items that would like to be pulled? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second by Barry. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, Commissioners, open forum, do we have anybody on the open forum? So we have a, a number of people, so we, we're gonna, please, we're gonna request that you please limit your time to five minutes. So we'll try to hold you to that. So the first person is Rick Michelson. And when you come up, please state your name and your address, please.
Good morning.
Morning, Rick.
I'm Rick Michelson. I live on Lake Sally. My address is 13125 West Lake Sally Drive. And I'm here, uh, on behalf of our Pelican River Watershed Board of Managers. I happen to be serving as the President right now. And, um, we are sad to say that we lost one of our great managers, Phil Hanson, who was voted as one of your Commissioner, fellow Commissioners. And because of that, you know, he couldn't serve as our, on our Board of Managers anymore. So that's what created the opening, um, right now. And, um, the way our, our board works, we like to have a good cross-section of representatives. I think you pretty much are all aware, our Pelican River Watershed kind of starts north of Floyd Lake and goes down through the two Floyds. I guess there are three Floyds now with North Floyd. And then down through Detroit Lake and Big Detroit, Little Muskrat Lake, Sally, Melissa, and then continues on following the Pelican River until just before it dumps into Buck Lake. And that's our, that's our watershed area. And we like to have a representative from the major lakes on that that are directly impacted by our Pelican River Watershed. And one of those is Lake Melissa. And that's where Phil lives, and he was our representative for Lake Melissa for many years on our board and did a great job. And so we have a candidate now, his name is Charlie Buck. I think he's on the list of speakers who'll be talking to you, and he'll tell you more about his background than I will talk about. But I've known Charlie for a long time. I graduated from high school with him. He's a good guy, good, solid guy. He, um, I think he is maybe like the third generation resident on Lake Melissa. He's got a long history of living on the lake. Now he is a full-time, he's retired now, but he's a full-time resident on Lake Melissa. And, um, I really know that he will do a really good job. He's a smart guy. He's, um, he's a retired airline pilot, but he'll tell you that he actually went to law school, has a law degree. Smart guy, knows the ups and downs of how committees and, uh, and agencies work. And I really support him 100% and hope that you will approve him as our new, uh, next new Board Manager on our Board of Managers. Anybody have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Charles Buck. Please state your name and your address, where you live.
Good morning, my name is Charles Buck. I live on Lake Melissa, 24429 North Melissa Drive, just basically in the Shoreham area. Thanks for your time. I'm here to apply for the position on the manager on Pelican River Watershed Board of Managers. I've been a longtime Detroit Lakes resident. My family's been here, I'm third generation. Grandpa came over on the boat, ended up working in Blandings Hardware. My dad ended up working in Blandings. I ended up working in Blandings. Dad eventually became an attorney, and his name's on the brass plaque outside the original entrance of this courthouse. He was a county attorney at the time. And he taught me that, you know, it's time to give back. When you're living in town, you give back to Becker County, and that's basically why I'm here. As Rick said, Detroit Lakes High School, went on down to the University of Minnesota, then drifted down south in the Mississippi to St. Louis, to Washington University for the School of Law there. Came back, passed the Minnesota Bar, was a member of the Bar for 35 years. I didn't actively practice much, I handled family stuff and took care of, took care of things, uh, for friends and state matters and property matters, but I wasn't an active, uh, active attorney by any means. I kind of fell for my first love, and that was flying. And I spent about a 40-year career with five different airlines. The last 31 was American Airlines. And I retired as a captain on a 767 flying international routes to Europe and Hawaii and South America. I've lived on Lake Melissa my entire life. Grandpa bought the place back in 1910, my maternal grandfather, Dr. Ball, from Fargo. And, uh, my grandson will be the fifth generation to be in this cabin. We recently winterized it about five years ago with your help.
I remember you now, I'm trying to think of who you were, but.
And, uh, made it, made it from a two-by-four in boards to a full four-season house. And it's our, it's our retirement home, and we're full-season residents. Pretty much everything I knew about flying, I learned on the waters of Melissa. I'm pretty much a water rat. I learned to hold a course, I learned to navigate, I learned to appreciate clouds and winds, and follow safety procedures. And, uh, most important lesson of all, take your boat or your airplane, don't ever take your boat or airplane in any place you haven't taken your brain about five seconds earlier. So, uh, any, anything that you appreciate in the air, I basically learned on the water right out here. I'm a water rat, and I'm on the lake from ice out till first freeze. I'll be on our Lund boat, taking wildlife pictures at dawn or fishing midday, or there's the pontoon cruise right about sunset. And I take our kayak down into the Mill Pond to do wildlife photography just north of Buck's Mills. And I've taken it regularly up, up the river to cross Sally, Muskrat, to Detroit Lakes, to Long Bridge and back. So I know the river, I've been on the river, I've lived on the river my entire life, and I appreciate just how important a resource it is for us. From the air, you can see just how beautiful this area is, and the pristine waters and the lakes. And I've also flown over the Dead Zone in the Gulf of Mexico, right at the end of the Mississippi, so you know the other end of the story. So I appreciate the quality, and I remember the water quality we had in the 50s and 60s, and how much it's improved now for my kids and my grandkids. And so if I do anything with that to give back to this county and this chain of lakes, I'd like to do so. So I appreciate your consideration for a member of the Board as a manager for the Pelican River Watershed District. Any questions?
I don't, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Charles. Erica Gilzendorf.
I think I saw you, Phil, and I thought of my brother, yep. Hans would say that. Hi, I'm Erica Gilzendorf, Detroit Lakes, Minnesota. You've each received an article recently published in the Minnesota Tribune titled, "Minnesota Needs to Do a Better Job Protecting Well Water from Runoff." As you've seen me many times before, I'm here to talk about the CAFL issue. I've attended many of your meetings over the past couple of years, as have many others, to express concerns regarding CAFLs, which are concentrated animal feeding operations and industrial farming coming to our county. Seems there is a perception that we're attacking farmers. We're not. We know our community relies, our communities rely on farming, and that farmers have their communities in their best interest. They want to feed our communities in America, and we're grateful. This isn't about farmers, and our concerns are not about farmers. It's directed at an ordinance that doesn't help farmers keep from doing unintended harm through CAFLs, an ordinance that doesn't protect the groundwater, the quality of our lakes and rivers, or prevent the inhumane treatment of animals that exists in a CAFL setting. We've heard from you repeatedly at these meetings that farmers won't put on more manure or other fertilizers than required because it's too expensive. Fact is, in other states and in southern Minnesota where CAFLs are located, and yes, right here in Becker County, too, they are. That information in Becker County is found in our CAFL report, which includes Eastern Becker County and the Straight River and Toad Rivers. We're here to request, um, counties and states across the U.S., and even here in Minnesota, as evidenced in the article I referenced, are now facing lawsuits due to poor planning that's caused dire water pollution impacts on drinking water and water quality of lakes and rivers. We're here to request you take a second look at the ordinance. We need an ordinance that helps farmers protect the water and to do what is right for the community, to raise good, humane food while protecting what we all love and need, clean water. We have an opportunity here not to go blindly into the future regarding CAFLs. In fact, it isn't going blindly, the problems are already there and are plain to see. The research is there, the community issues are already there, but in other counties, not ours yet. Please don't sleep on this for the easy way out, because it isn't going to be easy if the ordinance moves forward as is. The legacy you send forth today won't be something to be proud of. It's not going, it's not going great in other states, it's not going great in our neighbor states of Wisconsin and Iowa, and even closer, it's not going great in southern Minnesota. We can do, we can do things differently. As public servants, you can do things differently. I'd like the news article and my statement included to be included in the meeting minutes, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Uh, George Fraper, George Frankburg.
My name is George Frankburg. I live at 25055 South Melissa Drive. Can you hear me now?
Jerry, Jerry probably couldn't, but he's not hearing.
Well, that's why I'm here, because I have noticed a lot of people don't know how to use a microphone. Some people like me have a big mouth, and I don't need a microphone. And all of you would like to have a big mouth like George, I know that. So you have to work on that. Well, I don't want you to just believe me. Jean, are you interested in what these people have to say? I think she just said yes. Do you think we all sit here on these hard, miserable, uncomfortable chairs? Because we have nothing else to do, we hang on your every word. So I'm asking, please use a microphone, or if you're like me, you don't need a microphone, but speak up. Thank you very much.
Thanks, George. Willis Mattson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Willis Mattson, 42516 State Highway 34, Osage, Minnesota. I've appeared before you a number of times, and, um, it's clear to me that I've not communicated my concerns very well. I, um, love biology from the time I was in high school, went to college to get an education in the science and a master's degree, and practiced it for 30-some years, and even after, since I retired. So I tend to think in facts and figures in terms of science. Scientists don't communicate with non-scientists very well. So today, instead of talking about science, facts and figures and studies and reports and that kind of thing, and that's kind of a left-brain kind of thing, I want to talk to you from a different part of, of me. I want to talk to you more from the heart than from the head, and tell you about things I know. Things that you may not, but I can't really change that by giving you more information. All I can tell you is that I know some things, and I believe these things to be true. I know that the farming methods we use now pollute water. This I know. This I know is happening here in Becker County. Are there solutions? Yes, this I know. Why? Because I spend my time studying these things. I do know that you, as well in your job, want to take care of Becker County. You want to take care of Becker County's health and welfare. I truly believe that is in your heart, in my heart. I believe that is true. To do this, we want to do, by we, I'm speaking for myself today, so I would like to be able to have a heart-to-heart kind of conversation about what we believe is true, what we believe is possible, what we believe is within the authority here. The federal government has failed to do what's necessary to protect citizens. That's been the result of a lawsuit that I followed. Southern Minnesota, State of Minnesota, PCA, has failed to do what they're supposed to do. That's a part of the article, this I know. I used to work for the agency, and I know why they don't do their job. So the responsibility is falling down to us, as citizens, right here at the local level. And I do believe that local government is the best form of government in the entire world. Why? Because I can sit here and speak to you about what I know and ask you about what you know, and then try to do the right thing. I believe you will make decisions that you think you have to make. I'm going to ask you to broaden your point of view and make the decision that you believe is true to what you know. And I believe if we each do that, we will make good decisions for everyone. For the farmers, be it for the, the, uh, children and pregnant mothers out there that drink well water that here in Becker County is already contaminated. If we know that's true, and you have authority to change that, then we can sit down and say, what is it that we can do at the local level since federal and state government is failing us? But local government, because we can sit across the table from each other like this and speak from our heart, what do we know is true? We can change this, we can do better. But to do that, we have to have a good conversation. Sitting here and testifying to you, and I, I like it when I make eye contact with you, and I know that you're, you're listening, you don't, because of the format, don't answer, you don't answer questions. We need to move along on the agenda. I've got five minutes, and I'm close to the end of that. What I would like to do is have an opportunity in a forum where we discuss this and talk about what you know to be true, and then what we know to be true, and find the common ground. Because that will be for the good. That will do good in the community. So from the heart, I'm asking you, let's do good together. Thank you.
Thank you, Willis.
Thanks, Willis.
Yeah. I don't want to.
Birch Burdick.
Sorry, Birch, I couldn't read it. That's what I thought, but I didn't want to screw that one up, so.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I apologize if my writing was, uh, not legible. It's a little embarrassing, as I spent a number of years as an engineer, and my printing was fairly legible at the time. Apparently age has changed that. Birch Burdick, my address is 24780 North Melissa Drive. I'm President of the Melissa Sally Lake Association. I had a chance to give Ms. Smith a copy of a letter that I had prepared on behalf of the Lake Association. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, which is why I wanted to highlight it. Simply providing our encouragement and support for Charlie Buck as your appointed member of the Pelican River Watershed Board. I've known Charlie for some time. We live not far from one another on the lake, and I think he's got all the credentials. It would make him a perfect appointment for that position. I would note, which I didn't put in my letter, that the advertisement that the county has provided for this position is for Position Six, the Lake Melissa position. And from what I understand, he is the only person from Lake Melissa who is applying for that position. So I encourage you to appoint him, and if you have any questions, I'll answer them. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Birch. Is there anybody else here or online that would like to speak to the open forum? Just want to make sure we got everybody. Okay, let's move on to reports and correspondence. Who would like to go first?
I'll be a rookie, I'll go first.
I will go first. So, since last meeting, toured the jail, toured the social services building, toured Prairie Lakes, and spent some time at the transfer station. Those tours were very insightful, and I should probably go back for some more. Went to AMC, January 22nd, 24th, had a lot, that was really worth it for me, that new, new training. I just want to share a couple of things that I took away from it. I was having a problem with the Administrator, what's our role? It's the Administrator's role, and this kind of summed it up. Commissioners ask what and why questions, and Administrators answer the where, when, and how questions. That really helped me. I thought that was very, very useful and helpful.
Boy, that doesn't help me.
That was for you, Barry.
Now I've got to reevaluate.
You know, something we, I did talk to Barry a little bit about this, but something that I think down the road we need to work on a little bit is a, is a county strategic plan. Just, uh, what do we want this county to look like in 10, 20 years? We, we had a session on that, and, and I thought it was really good, and I couldn't answer those questions. And I, I think a work session down the road, not now, but down the road, might be good to, to, to answer some of those questions. I think they would help give our Department Heads direction. I, I think it would help all the way around. It's just a suggestion, but that's another thing I took from that, that meeting.
And one thing that we talked about, too, what Phil and I talked about, is. And one thing that we talked about too, what Phil and I talked about is we do have a mission statement and a vision now. And it's been years since we revisited that. And I don't know if we need to change it, but we should probably at least examine it for ourselves as this board and saying, is this appropriate? I think it's, I didn't review it before this, but I think it's still valid. But during that work session, we should just review it and say, are these, is it still valid today? Where our goals are and then look at, I mean, I hate strategic planning and mission and vision, but I certainly think it has some some merits.
Mission statement is strategic strategic plan are two different things, I think. And I I went across our website and was looking for that mission statement. I couldn't find it. But I'm sure it's there somewhere. There's a lot of information there. Twenty ninth, I had the Prairie Lakes meeting. I did. I don't know if I volunteered, I got put on the the finance committee over there. So Kevin Campbell from Clay County will be heading that up. We talked about getting ash, ash, some of that ash from the incinerator mixed into our roads, gravel roads and tar roads. And then we did talked about the 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 grant study, which we'll be discussing here a little later, so I won't go into that. Eric and I did planning and zoning on the night of the 29th. Some very interesting cannabis discussion. I don't know if I want to say anymore because I don't know much more. On the 30th, had environmental services. We talked a little more about that regional study. We have to do a little groundwater testing. Ten thousand dollars for two different studies, ten thousand dollars apiece. So that's will be coming before us soon. And then just environmental services is changing all the time and and just, you know, Sandy did a great job of getting out there and letting people know about what's happening in environmental services. And we did talk about some public education and possibly some messaging, which will be a cost to get that out there. We we're just digging down on that a little bit. And the rest is kind of small stuff.
I can go next. I had the I attended the the vice chair chair leadership conference down on the 22nd. We attended the, some of the same ones that Phil did for the the afternoon was spent with the 101 commissioners. And the morning we had a session with three counties. One, Clay County spoke just about the importance of the chair vice chair communication when you're talking about big building projects. And then we had Blue Earth chair and administrator, and they talked about the importance of communication during disaster because they talked about the flooding down there.
The dam broke.
Last, when the dam broke last spring. And then there was someone from
They were from Mille Lacs. Oh, no, Lackawar County.
Lackawar County.
Todd Johnson.
And he really just talked, I appreciated his conversation the most. Well, I wouldn't say the most, but it's what stuck in, what he said was the importance of, you know, one thing that we've learned at AMC and Julie Ring is really good at making known is that county politics is a nonpartisan politic setting, so that's why it probably works the best is because we don't have this polarization that we have going on in our state and country right now. So he just said, you know, advised us as county commissioners really to to think about that when things are presented to us for resolutions or whatever that really aren't nonpartisan. And I think most counties that were there have a stay in your lane. Is that what it was called? Stay in your lane policy?
They had a resolution.
A resolution.
But a lot of counties just have it in a procedural aspect instead of that.
And and really that is because the the things that we do as a board affect our employees. And when we take stands, they, it then can affect their day-to-day work that we maybe don't realize, whether it's communication with media or whatever it might be. So that's just one thing that I wanted to just point out. Then I had our planning commission with Phil and one thing that I think came about that, that the cannabis permit was withdrawn by the applicant. But I think we need to go back to the drawing board. One thing that was pointed out and I did a little more research is whether or not these growing facilities should be in industrial or agriculture. And I know we talked about it at one point when we were we were discussing our ordinance. And I think we need to go back and and see, and I did talk with Kyle a little bit. I think there's something in, I can't remember what it's called. It's it's something from the state of Minnesota about cannabis. But in there it does say that if you're going to have inside growing facility, which is what this one was, they're really geared more towards an industrial area versus an agricultural area. So just one thing that I think we might want to consider.
Dictate that also. I mean, it's a small, I imagine it's a hoop or greenhouse building.
Yeah, well, yeah, this one that was was proposed was a 5,000 square foot building. But just just something for us to consider as we're
I thought we did consider those light industrial.
I don't know that. I I think that all growing facilities in our zoning is agriculture or can be in agriculture, but.
Yeah, I think we did talk about it, but
We talked briefly.
I remember bringing that because there were suggestions from the state, but
Yeah.
But yeah, I could certainly do some research on that and bring it back.
Yeah, and then the only other one meeting I had was Fair Board. We discussed, there was some discussion on the transit building and what the plans are for that and more discussion on what the grants, what they're going to use for the grants.
What grants?
That they have coming every year. I think they have
For the building?
This was my first Fair Board meeting, so I'm not familiar with it. No, they get grants every year for entertainment.
They get an Agri grant every year and a legacy grant every year.
I knew Dave would have my back.
Yeah, and they can do certain things with each one of those grants. Like, for example, the Agri grant has to be more for education and the legacy grant is more for, like, they're going to purchase some more picnic tables. They're going to
I'm just curious, does that have anything to do with the transit building?
No.
No.
Okay.
No.
No, that was just me.
Okay, so I I meshed those together.
Yeah.
I guess my my question, I think, and I think we had instructed Kerry that talking to the Fair Board or what the what they, if they have any plans for the transbuildings. The first and probably in planning our space needs and how we can move, you know, if we're moving things to that building, we need to know if the Fair Board's all right with that. Because, I mean, we want to coordinate that process with them. And I think that's the first step, so.
And and Travis is going to, as soon as they get their data collected and make sure it's correct and Carla, the secretary will go, treasurer will go through all of that. He's going to come in and give us a report on the fair and then also discuss that too. So that's their plan. And I told him to get on the agenda, do this, you know, sooner than later.
Mr. Chair, just going back to what Erica said at the planning zone of the cannabis thing. You know, I think we're still waiting. I mean, I'm trying to come up to speed with where you guys are, but we're still waiting on some state stuff to to direct us there. But I really think we got to get out in front of that. That was a very uncomfortable meeting for planning and zoning. I mean, you talked about the industrial.
I'm sorry, I thought that was actually pretty good compared to how many zoning meetings typically are.
Okay, well, that was my first and I was uncomfortable. I don't think we had a lot of direction, but you know, whether whether it goes, you know, in this industrial area, we did briefly touch on that, or agricultural area. Yeah.
Excuse me, the problem is the state isn't up to speed yet. I mean, that's, so we're waiting for the state to get their rules and regulations and we hard to move forward when they they don't have it figured out.
I'd add one thing to the Fair Board. They're they also, so we've, they also brought up the fact that during the water carnival, they have chopper rides and they use the the parking lot where the midway is for the landing and so forth and take off of the choppers. Well, apparently the J.C.'s and the city want to change the the start, yeah, well, they don't want to change really the route, just where it starts. They want to start it down by by West Lake Drive instead of starting it up by, you know, up on, you know, north, more further north. So they want to use that area also for the, at the same time. Well, so there's, they're going to have to make a decision on how they want to do that because the chopper rides need that space and they do do chopper rides during the during the parade and so forth and during the and Sunday is their biggest, one of their biggest days, they said. So that's just another thing they brought up. All right, go, yeah, go ahead.
That was it. I'm done.
I had a extension meeting to determine award winners for Farm Awards. Bruce Hines passed this on to me and thought the board might be interested. It's summary of honor recipients since 1914. So if you want to just look at that. Also talked to this is an AIS Berwick County invoices. This is the invoices for the last year and I don't know. There's many things that the state is proposing and I'll get to a little bit of that. But one of them is slashing the AIS budget. The governor's proposal, I think, slashes that in half. So we could have a major change in in how we operate. I mean, the the number of, at least the number of visits on on lakes would significantly decrease. But this is what we've invoiced them in the past and some of that paperwork. So Mary, I think it's it's kind of a, it's moving target. But I think the important thing is that if we plan on invoicing the money, they need to see that prior to them setting their budget. I think it's not fair for the county to send them new charges of payroll admin fee for $2,200 in a first time ever that you send that charge now and well, now it's not in their budget. So that was one thing that we can do better. If we do have charges, we we need to get together with them prior to sending those charges out. Dave and I had Sunnyside. We're we're this, our, we're not on the calendar year, so our year is, we're still in the black, but we're not, we haven't done as well. So our new rates, so we're we're billing on old rates, so the new rates didn't start till January. So that will help significantly on our bottom line, which is still good. I mean, it's still above above. We're still in the black, but we're not, we weren't doing as good as
No, we were, and like Barry said, and then there were some bigger items that came out in in those months too, that nursing stuff.
So for those that you don't know, Sunnyside is a county-owned facility.
Yep.
We have a cash reserve over two, what is it, two million now? Just over two million? And we've, we owe the county for our remodel project from 20 years ago, we're down to what? Fifty thousand plus or minus 10,000, I think.
Sixty.
So anyway, the county holds our money. We don't get any interest on that. So that's it's kind of a, you know, a trade-off. You know, we've never gotten interest on that, our reserve. So that's working with the county. So the county benefits from that. But so we're thinking maybe someday we pay that down. And one of the things why we want to, might looking at pay that down, the nursing homes got is it federal or state money of 171,000 last year and and the year before that we need to pay building improvements, improvements, we just, we're buying 12 new beds to replace some old ones and the mattresses. So we have, we want, we have to spend that money on certain things and pay pay down is one of them. So we might be paying part of that down if not all of it.
And we also, she's also purchasing a 30 sets of like nightstands and dressers.
Kind of a remodel or refurnish the rooms. And that was for about 30,000.
Yep.
So otherwise, nursing home's doing very well.
Yep.
Anything to add on the Sunnyside?
Yeah, just just like like for, just like most probably organizations and mine too. At the end of the year, people like to use up their vacation that they can't carry over. So that puts a a bigger hit on your your bottom line. And then also when the rates don't go up till January 1st. So that's part of why too, the pro, I guess, whatever you call it, the bottom line wasn't quite as good, but yeah, other than that.
Yeah. Attended Lakeland Mental Health Building or Meeting, sorry. We did have a, we have a budget shortfall, but we decreased also our expenses. So we still are in the positive, we have a, we're profitable 7.4%. So it's a very good profit line, but we didn't hit our budget number. So not hitting, having a budget shortfall isn't necessarily the end of the world if you're still profitable if you decrease expenses, and that's what it was. And some of those are positions that that generate income, but they aren't there. So you so you lose the income, but you don't have the expense too. Yeah, Denise Denise is the representative for for the human services for our area and she was, did not get to be at that meeting either, so. And then this isn't, this was, Peter just announced he's he's going to be retiring from the DLCC. Peter is our representative, our layperson representative. He's not retiring from the board, but he is retiring from the from that committee, so, or from from his job. So he'll probably have more time than he said he could get down in the meeting because he's been zooming him. And Zoom meetings are decent when you have to, but I prefer not Zoom meetings for for most of the time. Had an MRC meeting, just a, just a online, just a Zoom meeting yesterday. But it reminded me that there, we have legislative forum, the 25th and 26th, and we should probably, if you are planning on going, and I think I think we should be going, that we need to get rooms and register with AMC on that, so. Senator Johnson was there and he spoke. Lot of discussion on the burdens of the counties. The governor's budget that came out was significant hits to counties. AMC and MRC put a letter to St. or the 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 trib to open letter. It kind of showing some of those concerns where MA reimbursements are being cut, AIS has been cut. There's, we learned in the sheriff's department that that STS is proposed to be cut. Now, these are just the proposals, so we don't know where they're going to land. But there are so many things and and then then we're also talking about the family medical leave, the Safe and Sick and African American Restoration Act. All these are not fun, I mean, these are huge, huge impacts to county bottom line. And if the state doesn't address those, our, I mean, we are, we are in serious financial harms way, so.
Barry, what does that look like? That means we'd have to cut programs if that happens, if they're not funded? Or do we still have to carry them out?
No, these are, these are programs that we are mandated to carry. I mean, they're like the
But unfunded, then?
Well, right now, they are. Now, Senator Johnson was saying that, you know, they, everyone recognizes this and hopefully they're trying to find some solutions. But when you have a state budget that's looking at shortfall, I don't know where the money's going to come from. So, I mean, the time to be concerned is now, not not in two years when we have to raise the taxes, you know, double digits and and I mean, we are, and that's part of the discussion coming up later about hiring is we are, there are a lot of concerning things budget-wise in the next, well, short-term future, in my opinion.
Okay, you've got me concerned, but what action can we take?
Well, we need to lobby the state and tell them that that these programs are so costly that, you know, Bill Sterns, Scott Onins, and of course, he had, he's said this at MRC meetings before. Just the American, just the African American Preservation Act could cost his county a 10% levy increase. Over a million dollars for for his county, which is a 10% just for that one program. So now you add, you know, family medical leave and Safe and Sick, we've tried to, we're kind of absorbing that now, but there is cost to that. And I think Dave alluded to that, Sunnyside. There's there's usage of those programs, which makes you have a shortfall. I mean, which hurts your bottom line at the end of the year. So those I mean, there, I think we heard earlier that they're going to try to amend the which one, family medical leave. They're going to try to amend that. Because the Safe and Sick one is already
Yeah, they're trying, they're going to try to to the, that one, the family medical leave wouldn't go into effect until 26.
The paid community leave.
Paid, yeah.
Yeah.
Wouldn't go into effect until 2026, but they're trying to either amend it or they're trying to postpone it because it's not funded. And that's a big concern for me as a business owner too, because, yeah, that's
That's a huge concern.
Yeah.
I mean, for us as a county, yes, but also
Because all, because the sick and safe leave is not, is not funded either.
No, I mean, there, these are things that counties are, we have to absorb and and pass pass through. So I think it's very important to talk to legislators and let them know the concerns that we have and
So once again, as far as an action item, we're doing all we can with our lobbyists to get to legislators.
Us saying it means more than lobbyists saying it. If we're at the Capitol saying these are our concerns to our to our legislators, it carries more weight than lobbyists. I mean, and especially if they hear that in force that but there are there's lots of things in the the proposal that, you know, we haven't, we haven't even figured out how to, you know, what what the cost would be. So I mean, and our lobby, AMC and MRC is very good at that. But I think when they call for people to, you know, then say, you know, we need you guys to call your legislators and express these are their concerns and show, and they'll show us why and then that, then we relay those messages, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just wanted to add, piggyback on what you were saying. I think it would be important for our county to really look at some of these proposed cuts and and really the the dollar amount of what the impact would be. I think it would be important for our county to really look at some of these proposed cuts and, and really the, the dollar amount of what the impact would be. And so I know I've spoken to Denise specifically and she is looking at some of those because I think specific figures for counties and bringing that forward when some of us go to the legislature, you know, the conference in February, I think would be impactful.
Because I think if you look at it, Bill Sterns has the numbers. And that's what's going to impact legislators, is having the dollar amount. It's not us going down there and saying it's going to impact us.
I think you need to have the figures.
It's going to say this is how much it's going to impact us.
So, and that, and that's just at the state level now. And you look at what, what could come down at the federal level, if, if programs are cut and, and eliminated, obviously it will affect our local staff because that, if there's no money to reimburse some of these programs in, in Human Services, then those programs, we, we just can't fund them ourselves.
Yeah, I, I think about many of the, the Human Services positions are funded by Medicaid. You know, I mean, there's, there's a lot that, and if that's overhauled and, you know, we, there, there's a lot of unknowns right now.
Yeah, I mean, and a week ago or two weeks ago, there was, there was a order to stop all, stop all payments. And, and so, I mean, we, and that's, that's why the, we have to reconsider every new, every hire as a, and review what, where we are at that time, I think. That's the later discussion, but. Also had a sheriff's meeting. We have a, it was the longest sheriff's meeting I ever been at.
Oh my gosh.
And, uh, I think most things are on the agenda. Did you see?
Yeah, everything, except for, we talked, you talked about the STS. So the governor's proposal is to cut the STS by June 30th, so.
This year?
Yeah.
Correct.
Oh.
That's, yeah, so, and that would affect us. I think we figured out one position's funded at 75%, one position's funded at 25%. So it's basically one full-time position that we would have to pay for.
If we continue to do it.
It's not much of a.
No, not really, no.
No, and that's what I, what I asked, Wade was there and I said, is there anyone that, that, you know, and of course, this is still just, you know, his proposed budget. But, I mean, if you can, I mean, this is our current year. I mean, remember when Governor Palenti did an allotment in December and, you know, it's like, this is our, end of our year. How are we supposed to make up a $200,000 shortfall from the state in three weeks? It's, you just can't do it. So we set our budget, obviously, and, and we're in, in the middle of the year. Their budget is a, their fiscal year is, ends in what, June 30th, I believe? And it doesn't, I don't know how you have the short-sightedness to say, we're going to cut you for your fiscal year. Say, you know, at least half, you give it, we're going to give you half in the next, our fiscal year. So we can get to the end of the year to determine how we want to proceed.
I think it does all really show the importance of AMC.
Right.
And they're really looking out for the counties at the state.
There's emergency management, a lot of, there was one other thing.
Uh, the, wasn't that the, the ECO, oh, the ECO, the O C, is that what it is?
Well, yeah, the Sheriff Glaner, they pointed out some of the shortcomings of our, of our current emergency center.
Yeah.
And, um, I think that's, that's another long-term planning to see how or if we can improve those, some of those conditions, some of those. We went through work, like with every other committee, went through job classifications.
And those, those I believe are not ready to come to the board yet. They're still working on those. Is that correct, Carrie?
Sheriff Glaner also looked at a bailiff position moving from fart, part-time to, part-time to full-time. And we, he was going to bring that back and look at, didn't bring it, he's not bringing it to board now. We had a couple of questions for that, so. Anything else on sheriffs?
Nope.
Couple of questions maybe I, I had were, did you, were you going to bring that up? Or I haven't heard anything about the, the recorders. Was there a requirement to? Are we, did you, I see it's not an agenda, that any requirement for salary?
So, so we, we discussed it at finance yesterday and we decided that we're not going to put it on the agenda. They both put on the agenda for the next.
Look at it.
Yeah, board meeting.
I haven't read the finance minutes, so. Okay, um, the only other things is anyone that wants to go to the leadership, I think MRC has a meeting, so I'll, I'll need to get rooms for, with Peggy or Amanda, whoever wants to grab the.
So I, I'm going.
I'm going.
Yeah.
And Carrie's going.
MRC's that.
The night before, yeah, or that, are you, are you planning on going?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'll.
You're going for the whole conference, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so, I'll.
Okay, you can check with Peggy, but she can make those arrangements.
Okay, I think that's it.
Uh, Richard?
The only thing I had was environmental, Phil, and he's covered everything.
I had, I had, I had meetings, but I had two that we haven't talked about. So I had DAC meeting. The DAC is up 32% in clients. This was, she did this, she gave us the information last, last month. So since she started as our interim director, now she's our full director, for the last 15 months, so. It's good, if things are going well, there's been done some nice remodeling done in the floor, we got new flooring in portions of the, of the DAC, the main area and, and some of the side areas. There's paint on the walls, the paint does amazing stuff. Yeah, and there's a good morale. She's, she's, we've been able to hire more employees because we have more clients. So things are looking up, things are looking good. I think we have a total between residential services and day services. I think we have 84 clients now. And then when she came in, there was, in the, well, 32% less, whatever that would be. Actually, the, the big increase has been in the day services. We have a lot more day service people. And they do make more money on the residential services, but so that, there are more of those too. So it's, it's looking up. And then we also just got awarded an, an $12,000 art grant. And it's, it's for a 12-week program where an artist will come in and work with the clients at the DAC and create art. And they're going to do it for 12 weeks, so. We got that idea from Hubbard County DAC. And we actually saw it in action when we were down to visit, it was pretty cool, so. Barry and I also had a courthouse meeting.
Same as that, sorry.
I don't know if, I don't, did you talk about courthouse?
No.
Okay. So we went through job descriptions, I believe they're on the agenda. One thing we did also too is we talked about IT servers. And we had a long time ago, I don't know if the word earmarked is the right word, term, earmarked some special general funds for that. We have to do some more investigating on, about those funds. But anyway, there, our servers are getting to the end of their life, so we have to do something. And what's, Judy was going to check to see if we pay it all upfront or if we can pay it over time. If it's, if we, if we don't, if we, if we're not going to save money by paying it upfront, we might try to pay it over a period of, I don't know, three, four years in, in the budget. So she was going to, she was going to look at that. Uh, then.
You know, there might come a time when we want to, cost analysis going back to paper. Seriously, it's just ridiculous.
It is, it's, well, the cybersecurity is so out of control. I mean, you can't, and you have to do it because otherwise you lose everything.
Mary would be in heaven if we went back to paper.
So the last thing that, this wasn't really a, a committee, but we went to it, Carrie and I went from representing Becker County and then Commissioner Jepson was there as, as a state person. Anyway, the state and tribal relations training. And actually, I learned a lot. There's, I'm, I'm a history buff, and so there was a lot of, there was a lot of history of what, of all the things that have happened, all the treaties and all the, the acts and all the rules and, and so forth, so. And it was, it was kind of, and there were some cultural things that they, they discussed and looked through.
Thank you.
So there was a lot of, it was a lot of good information. To me, it was, and, and it was, I don't know if you guys have anything.
Mr. Chair, I, I, did they do like a PowerPoint presentation on that or something? I would be very, because I'm really behind the A-ball on that too. Some history there would be very beneficial to me to just.
I don't, I don't think all of this is on there, but you can. Take this one off, take a look at that. Actually, you can have it.
I think the website for the tribal state training.
There's a QR code on there, I think that goes to the PowerPoint, yeah. There, a guy, what was his name, his name was Tad, the guy that did most of the, did most of the presenting on the history of, just, just, he just went through the history of, of this is what happened here, this is the act, this is the treaty, this is another act, and just called the whole through process of like 400 years and then like six different sessions that he, he went through. So I mean, it was interesting, I, I was.
See, he's the, from U of M?
No, the, the other guy's from the U of M, the guy that was kind of the host of the whole conference.
Ted Johnson's been recognized, I think, by three or four presidents.
No, he was from, or you say U of M or University of Minnesota Duluth?
Duluth.
Duluth was the, the guy that was, uh,
Joe.
I don't remember his name, but he was the, like, the host, the emcee. And then Tad is from the University of Minnesota, but he's been at other places too, yeah. Or he retired from the University of Minnesota.
No, he is retired from the University of Minnesota. For Senior Director of American Indian Tribal Relations. They both were from the University of Minnesota.
I think that's it, so. Does anybody else have any committee reports at all? All right. Let's go to appointments. Can you get my quick screen on here? All right, appointments, so we have Pelican Watershed District.
Carrie, did we receive any other applicants from our, Scott Busker and?
Just the two.
Good.
Yes, please, come, come up to the mic, please, and state your name and, and your address.
My name is Lori Olson. I'm also on the Pelican River Watershed Board. I'm the Vice President of that Board of Managers. I know we have a couple of great applicants for this open position that, that Phil has created. But I would like to speak on behalf of Scott Busker today. Scott Busker has a background in civil engineering. He has also developed several building projects, large multifamily housing projects. He has experience working with the Pelican River Watershed District. He understands the rule process and we are at a critical point with rules right now because we're in the process of revising them. So Scott could come on to the board and be up to speed with where we've been and what we've accomplished in the last year. So the learning curve would be small. He is also a resident of Long Lake, when we don't have anybody on the board that represents Long Lake. So that would give us a little, a little more diversity.
Lori, can I ask you, Rick didn't, he didn't mention Long Lake. Is Long Lake in the, a part of the watershed?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so it would be good to have somebody representing Long Lake. Rick mentioned he is part of the Lake Sally and Melissa Lake Association. So we do have representation from Sally Melissa Lake Association.
Okay.
So I think that Scott would be, he would be a good fit to just move right in and be up to speed with where we're at and some of the critical things that we're working on right now.
Thanks, Lori.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, you know, having been on the committee, I, I, this was a, like Lori said, this was a critical time to depart. I mean, we, the last couple of years have been tumultuous to say the least, but I think we're on the right track, we're nearing the end. One thing that, that needs to happen is we need to get a memo of understanding with the county at the watershed. So, so the end, the customer is getting the same information and we didn't quite have that before. So that's going to be important. As far as Scott, I, I know Scott, you know, the rules, like the, the engineering thing, you know, hopefully he can come up to speed on, on rate control fast, things like this, technical things. I don't know that, but he has had some building projects, like Lori said, in the community, so I'm, I'm sure he's crossed paths with the watershed already. The other thing that's, that's happening is Gina Kemper has, has resigned to take another job. So that's like the frontline person and that, 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 that's a tough, tough role. So that person will need to be replaced by the watershed as well. That person is the onsite person around the lake where someone played, paid a million dollars for a lot and wants to, thinks they can do whatever they want and they can't. So that position will be very important to replace. So, I mean, there's, there's just a lot of significant things going on. I think Scott could hit the ground running better with some of the, some of his past experience. One thing too is this, so, so my term, I was a three-year term guy, my term is up in May. So we'll have to go through the same conversation again in May. This is, he'll just be filling out my term as I understand it. One thing Birch said, Lake Melissa Position 6. I know like with the RAC Committee, which we're going to be talking about next, you need a person from each designation from the county, from each.
District.
District.
That's not.
That's not the case as we understand it with the watershed?
The, even the RAC, you, each commissioner appoints, gets an appointment, it doesn't necessarily have to be their district.
Uh, I.
Well, it doesn't have to be, but it's.
It's preference.
It's preferred that we have representation from different parts of the district.
So do we, do we know what, maybe Tara can answer that? Do we know, is there a requirement?
No.
In bylaws or anything?
No.
No?
No, it's just been over the last, you know, 60 years, kind of representation throughout. Like, for instance, like Chris Daskin here, he's.
Tara, could you come up to the mic, please? Thank you.
When I send the letter, like for the reappointments, I kind of say, here's the positions, like Orin Olkerson represents an A area.
Right.
And Charlie is also kind of a, a non-Lake-type person. When Chris got on, he was living at, by Long Lake, so he was the Long Lake position and that's still his same position, is the Long Lake one. So I, I'm not sure, we've, this has been a historical thing, we've always had representation like that, like Lori is on Detroit. So, I mean, if next time around you say, well, we're not going to have somebody on Detroit because we like this other person better, you know, people might get upset about that. And so it would be nice with the balance. I mean, I don't know, I mean, I feel that over the years, when there's just, when you start undoing the balance, it hurts. I think that Phil, hopefully even next week, we could be, or the next couple of weeks could be approving, adopting the rules by March. We're, we're at the end of the process here, so that'll work. I'm interviewing for Gina's position on Thursday, so hopefully we'll get that filled quickly. So, and we have a really good engineering firm. We have spent $75,000, folks, on getting these rules rewritten between engineering and attorney fees. So I, I feel like we're, we're at the end of that game, so. And we've got a really good staff with the engineering firm to help us through the process. So I just wanted to make that note too.
And that's why, that memo of understanding between the county and the watershed is going to be critical, that piece. How it, you know, I was hoping it could come together, it would come together and coalesce around the spring when the building season starts, but maybe that won't happen. But we still have to have that agreement, that's critical to the end user.
As far, as far as this position goes, was it at, I think Birch mentioned it or somebody mentioned it, that this position was advertised as a Lake Melissa position?
Yeah, and I think the play on words here, when I went back to how it was advertised, it said Position 6, Lake Melissa. But we can't find anything, or I couldn't find anything that it's required. It seems as though it's a preference, is what I'm understanding.
It's kind of, that's the way it's been historically done, you know, since, well, Sally Melissa helped start the watershed district, so I don't know, that's the way it's been.
But now we don't have anybody from Long Lake because Chris doesn't live there anymore.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I, I think we should throw out the areas out the window myself because you, you look at, the board looks at who you, who's best for, who's the best fit in this.
Yeah.
And we're such, it's such a small area. I, I, I mean, I, you want to balance and this board at, should, and, and the recommendation should look at balancing not just area, but what's your background? What's your, what's your expertise and what's your, what's your involvement? I mean, you could have, it just, it just seems, this is too small of an area, I think, to, I mean, you, you, preferably, yeah, that's, that's fine. But the Corment Watershed, every member of their board currently is on Big Corment Lake. They're trying to find other lakes, trying to, and it's just tough to find people. So I think it's a good guideline, but I don't think you should live and die by, by these.
You know, Mr. Chair, as I've evaluated this, I think it's really critical that Orin was. was, was on that board, just because he represented the farm, or he was a farmland up there, and that's, that's a critical part where the watershed starts. After that, I don't know, everybody, everybody is concerned about lake water quality, so I guess with that, I would move to nominate or appoint Scott Busker as member to the, as manager to the watershed board.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a, we have a, we have a motion by Phil and a second by Richard for, to appoint Scott Busker to the Pelican Watershed Manager.
Is Scott here at all?
He's not here.
No. Do we have any further?
There is.
Hold there, hold, he's right there.
He is.
Do we have any further discussion?
Would Scott like to speak, or can we do that?
Can we do that? Or we have to vote?
I think you have a motion.
I think we have a motion, I think we just have a discussion between ourselves.
Yeah, I, I think for me, I just want to say, I'm going to depend heavily on Phil, because, because Phil's part of it, and, you know, I don't, I don't live in that area, so that was all I want to say.
All right, so we have, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? So all in favor of appointing Scott Busker to the Pelican Watershed Manager position, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So Scott Busker is appointed to the Pelican Watershed District. I'd just like to thank everybody that came and gave your opinions and your input, so thank you very much. We now will move on to the Recreation and Advisory Committee. So we have, we have, we have two people, don't we?
Yes.
Yep, and I think this is an at-large.
It's an at-large position, yes.
Mr. Charles, I'd just like to say thanks, and thank you for applying and putting your name out there.
Thank you, Charles.
I know, Mr., we've, we've, it's tough to put your name out there not being accepted. You certainly have the qualifications, hope you keep us in mind for future, future projects, as you undoubtedly have the experience and the expertise, so thank you.
Thank you, Charles, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm not, I, we received a letter for the RAC, is Glenn here?
Greg.
Glenn Gifford. And Greg, I don't see either one.
We just had the.
So.
Yeah, we just have Greg Johnson and Glenn Gifford, I don't believe we have anybody else.
Yep.
Okay, so Erica, you're on the RAC, we're on the RAC. Okay, so, yeah, I've been on the RAC Committee, I resigned that position, and John Oakson took the District Three, but we're appointing the Member-at-Large to the RAC. Glenn is very much into ski trails and stuff, and I think that fits well. Greg was on the Project 412 Committee, so I think either of these applicants would be great additions, from what I know. Glenn's been to the last couple of meetings to see what's going on there, but Greg's been to some, too, so I don't think we can go wrong with either one.
I've known, I know, I've known both of them, so they're both would be super members of the committee.
I think Glenn's come to NRM before in support of the ski trails, but I think, I'm not.
That would make sense.
But I don't, I don't know either one very well, so.
Yeah, I don't know either one either.
Do we have a motion to appoint one of those two members to the RAC Committee?
Mr. Chair, would it be helpful if you tabled this, and we got additional, or asked or invited them to the next meeting, or I think you're struggling?
I think we're, yeah.
We typically don't have this problem.
No.
I know, you usually have only one.
One person, one position, right.
Which is great to see, but it doesn't.
So I would, I would, I would, I would make, do we need a motion to table it?
I don't think so.
If we just table, so I would suggest that both.
Well, Mr. Chair, if, if you want a motion to pick one, because I mean, if they're both good candidates, if you, if you guys know them both, and you think they're both qualified, it's not going to change if they both.
No, no, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I think, I think the time you just pick one, and if I was going to have to pick one today, just from, if Glenn has went to a couple of meetings and shown that much interest, he's come to NRM meetings, then that would be, I mean.
Greg has been to meetings, too.
Oh, Greg has, too?
Yeah, the last couple, I think Glenn was, too, and seriously asking questions about how it works and stuff, so maybe he's a little farther along, but Greg has been there before.
Okay.
I think it was maybe on behalf of Project 412, but.
All right, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to appoint Glenn Gifford to the Recreation Advisory Committee, but the at-large member.
I'll second.
Because we have a motion and a second, so all in favor, or any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, County Administrator Report, Carrie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first thing is, last Friday, Cody Piper and I, we went out to the Extension Building, or the EDA Building, so I got the tour of that building, it's a very nice space, and again, just trying to gather more information about what buildings and what space we have for future use.
So Carrie, regarding that, if we can vacate, I mean, I, in your weekly report, I was reading about other possibilities, and I don't think I'm interested in some of those possibilities on keeping that building. I would like to, we vacate that building and sell that whole, whole area, myself, so just to give you my opinion, where, where we, where I see us moving. If we can get Extension out of there and get dive rescue over to sheriffs, and that building would be vacant, and the impound building would be vacant, that whole area, I, I would hope that we could sell that and put that towards, that's my opinion.
I agree with Barry. I don't, I don't think we need it.
Is that, is that, is that next to, what is that next to? Is that next to, like, Tweetins, or is that next to?
No, it's on Eleventh Avenue. It's like, just, there's that auto body shop.
Finest Auto.
And then there's a couple down from there.
Tweetins is there, too, though.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not like on, it's not on the same side of the, it's on the other block, not on Dynamics Block?
It's on the north side.
Right down from Tweetins, too.
Okay.
Next to the trailer court.
Okay, okay.
But just my two cents.
Yeah, so just getting familiar with what space we have and, and what we want to do for future, for, for the, all the counties, and that building is owned by EDA.
Do we have a written inventory of our county space?
It's all under MCIT. You know, we have insured, it's all insured, so we have that, through that.
But what space we have is.
What space we actually have, like.
Plan.
Transit at the Fairboard, do we own that?
Yeah, we own the building.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fairboard property.
If we have a quick copy of that, of our, of our buildings that we, I mean, I know most of them, I think, but some of these come up, and I'm not even familiar with them.
Like on Highway, we have a building on fifty-nine that we just cold storage and culverts and stuff.
There's, there's also.
Osage.
Through, through housing, the county, you know, we have, we have several buildings through our housing program.
Highway, Highway has a out shop in Lake Park.
So that, but that's a little.
Big one in Osage, small one. But yeah, there's, there's a lot of things that you just forget about.
Do we have an inventory of that, Carrie, of?
I would say no.
Okay.
Just through MCIT.
Just, if it's insured, yeah, we would, but not, we probably don't.
You know what, could I see that MCIT? Could I see that list of?
They could probably bring down.
Just, just, just pull the buildings out, and I'd just like to see that.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right.
Go ahead, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So in your packet, you have a prior policy that Commissioner Nelson wanted to revisit, and this was just a little background, previously how we were operating back to twenty-two, probably twenty-three, any vacant positions that were vacated via process, whether they were terminated, resigned, or retired, those positions were always brought back to the board for board authorization to fill those positions that were budgeted. So the policy back then was modified to streamline the process of filling those positions through, through HR, and at that time, when we modified that, we talked about committees, certain committees that were responsible for those positions to have those discussions with department heads in, in filling those positions. Now, and with Commissioner Nelson bringing this forward, he wanted to have, the board to have a conversation, whether or not we wanted to revisit that policy and have all of those positions come back, back to the board for consideration as well.
Thank you, that, that's exactly the, exactly right.
Did I get it right?
I just, I just think in today's environment that we need to take a very hard look at every, every hire, and how we hire that position back. We are going to, we are going to be in financial trouble, I, the state is, and that, that'll come down to us, and I think we have to revisit, and I think programs will be cut in the next, within the next year, and I think we have to, I mean, if we, if we have to just slow it, slow our hiring process down to make, to give us as much time to review any changes coming down, I think, I just don't think we want to hire as fast as possible right now. So I would, I would think that we should bring these positions back to board and have these discussions on, you know, you know, maybe the jail would be one that, that, you know, there's no money, there's no outside money coming for jail employees, but human services is going to be huge. I mean, we have no idea what's going to happen to human services in the next.
My, so, do you think we could do something like this? Could we, could we list the positions, you know, so that we can get a pool of applicants, and then, but, and then have, you know, if.
When you say list, you mean advertise?
Yeah, yeah, advertise.
Okay.
If it's, if it's not a, not a new position, but a, you know, a replacement, can we, can we advertise and then have, then bring it to board before we interview anybody?
The problem is if you want to hire part-time instead of full-time, or if you want to, it depends on what your position is.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But I, and maybe you could limit it to any, any position that has any state or federal money, but, you know, supporting the salary.
Yeah.
Well, and I think, you know, your options are certainly to modify this, if that's what the board's wishes are. The other suggestion I had, if you're, and I, I agree, we need to scrutinize these, but, you know, whether or not you could do that at your committee level as well.
Well, the problem with that is, if a committee says yes, and, and the majority of the board says no, that's not.
That's true.
I mean, the committee's only two.
Correct.
And then the rest of the board doesn't have any input or even any knowledge of it at times.
It wouldn't have been a part of the discussion.
Besides looking at the open position part, so.
So I, I guess for me, what I would like to know is, if this is something we're going to look at, what are we, I mean, I, I think the department heads take a look at that already of what is the best, so what are we, as the board, going to look at, look at where the funding is coming from and where, you know what I mean? Like, the department heads know the positions the best and what their needs are.
Well, I think it's needs or wants. I mean, not necessarily, just because they want it doesn't mean that we, that we believe, I mean, commissioners don't have to have the same opinion as your department heads. I mean, so if you're, if we think, if we feel that it's changing, and, and, I mean, department heads protect and work for their, their, or their supervisors.
Yep.
So we are the balancer, if there ever needs to be. You're not, that's my opinion. I think your department heads are going to usually want more positions and more, I mean, you know, you, you kind of say it in jest, but I'm thinking of one department head that says, I'll spend, I'll spend money, I'll spend all the money he give me, you know, and then, you know, saying it jokingly, you know, if we authorize it, they'll take it, there's no.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think that's, the decision-making's here, that's my opinion.
Well, I don't think we can, I think this needs to be a countywide policy. I don't think we can say for only certain positions, they need to go through.
And it's not anything new, it's just reverting to what we were prior to twenty-two, and those positions always came to the board for us to review.
And, and the policy that I did, again, was the revised policy that this board had approved, because we modified how we were operating before having all positions come before the board with a, an allocation of what the cost analysis was. That's how we were operating when I.
You know, and a lot of times, and I tell you, the workforce is changing rapidly. I mean, the jobs aren't there, like, you know, people are being laid off, you know, so I think there are positions now that we can go back and look at part-time positions, and that might be a fit, and it could save money, so I mean, each position, I think, you look at your options again, and, and maybe there aren't any, you know, there's, certainly there's positions that there's not many, and you have to, but this, I tell you what, as far as looking into the future for the next year or two, and with the budgets at the state and the cuts at the Fed, I mean, you better tighten your belt, because it's going to get, it's going to get scarier here, in my opinion, so. I would like, I would.
Who better tighten their belt than when?
Huh?
I mean, you, you say that, and who better tighten their belt and when?
If, if we get, if human services gets cut for public health, and there's no funding, we have to cut.
But we're obligated to do that, we just talked about that before, right? We're obligated to provide that service.
If that program is cut, then there's no program, and there's no, no requirements. I mean, I, we're just in a different, I think it's a different game right now, we just don't know what. If the federal government cuts programs and says, we are not going to do what, DEI or, I mean, there's a lot of things that will, that laws will fall away. I mean, if laws start falling away, we have to say, are our taxpayers locally going to pay for these programs, or are we going to cut them? That, that will be, that will be our decision.
I think, I think when you, you look at mandated services at human services, the biggest mandated service is, you know, your, your protective services, your adult protection and your child protection, which those are largely already funded by the county, you know, there's some funding that comes in from state and federal government, federal government is, you know, more dependent on qualifications, but much of the targeted case management, much of like the public health stuff, is, is services that we have to require, but we get paid for it, so if, which is why, which is why we have been able to increase those positions in the last couple of years, because really, as Richard and I have seen, like, it makes sense, because we have more, those, those positions are generating income that their, county dollars aren't being used. If that changes, then we have some very difficult decisions to make, because those, we, we can't fund those positions on county dollars solely, so, I mean, I, I agree, I think that we need maybe some.
And we might not change anything, but I think it has to come, I think it should come here, so we review them.
I mean, I don't like that either, but I, I don't know. I mean.
I, I think the, my personal opinion, I think the market is different than it was two years ago, I think we're not having as big an issue with finding people, I might be way off base.
Nope, you're, no, you're correct.
So I agree, we might have to evaluate how even replacing, you know, replacing a position, we might have to, so the only way that we can assure that is for it to come to us, but if we need to fill something, we might, we might have a backlog of filling a position now, or, you know, that's just the reality of it.
So, so previously, if I recall correctly, positions went to the committee, and then committee gave their opinion, and then they came to the board, and then once the board approved, they.
List, they.
They posted the position. So one thing, just having been in a human services position in a department that, you know, working in child protection, when you have to wait for sometimes a month or more before a position even gets posted, that's, puts a lot of stress in an already very stressful environment. So is there any way, like, what if somebody resigns the day after the committee meets, and you're not going to meet for the, like.
You mean, they, with no notice, they just quit, walk out?
Well, if, if they have a, no, 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 if they, they put in their resignation, the day after. The day after Human Services Committee meets, and then if this has to go to the committee before it can go to the board, well, we're then a month out before it goes to.
Committee, committee meetings can be called, or over the phone, or you don't, I mean, you can, a department head can call their two committee members and say, hey, what do you think about this, here's, I'll shoot you the email, and, you know, if, can I put this on the board agenda before, because our next meeting is, I mean, that's not, I mean, it would be two weeks.
Yeah.
That's just what I want to.
I would be okay with that.
I mean, I would be okay if it's a two-week, you know, wait before.
If committee members are okay, I've always been okay with that.
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, I think that's happened, I think that has actually happened, even with this policy, that's happened, because they hadn't been able to meet at a committee.
No.
Or one, the previous policy, I mean, not this.
But I, but I do think that, given this environment, we need to be having those conversations more at the committee, committee level.
Well, you think.
Regularly, like, having those.
And I, and probably expand it even, if, if we have an opening in this department now, we have to review if we can fill that. I mean, you can get a. I mean, you can get ahead of it too, you know, and say, but, you know, I'll go back to, go back to years ago, that we didn't hire a position until we ran all their, their retirement expenses out of that position. So if that position was a long-term employee, and they had $5,000 worth of benefits, we didn't hire that position till that payroll equaled that benefit payout. So there were long stretches of, where, where job went unfulfilled, when we had a long-term employee retire, because we were not gonna have a negative on payroll. And we quit doing that probably, I think that was Brian Berg always, always, that was the policy then, that job will not start until this last person's expense zeroed out. So, we, we were much faster than that.
I, I was just gonna say, I think a couple of things to consider is, you know, I haven't really had the opportunity to vet this with department heads to see if they have any additional ideas about how to do this or go by, and I understand that the board can make that decision, but I think in general, and I think this ties back to our concerns with budgets, and our budgets, and I think that at the committee level, probably should play into the conversations US committee members are having within your respective committees on budgets and, and probably having deeper conversations with that, as we kind of get into this time period where it's an unknown.
So that was gonna be, I was just gonna say that.
Oh, did I read your mind?
Yeah, I know, it's really hard to do that. No, I, so what do you think of this, would, if we say, let's, let's bring this to the department heads and say, hey, this is what we're gonna do, we wanna, and then we wanna make sure that the committee's heavily involved, and if it, if it doesn't, if it happens at a bad time, then you, you email your committee member, your two committee commissioners, and, and then we get it to the, you know, board and.
I think we do that, and we.
Yeah.
Update them at their meeting that that's, this is the way it is.
Yeah, that's.
I don't know if that we need to, I mean, if there's something specific, but if there's, I mean, otherwise, if you're not on that committee, you don't even know of a, of a job, I mean, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
If we don't do it this way.
Yeah.
There's times when, when the commissioner's not on the committee or completely in the.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, but I mean, have it, we bring it to board, but if we can speed up the process by what Erica was saying.
Yeah, I, I think that's appropriate.
I think that's appropriate.
And I've always, we've, I've always been open to, when a, a department head has a, a opening and say, hey, this is our justification, and you get, you know, you ask as many questions as you want.
Yeah.
And then say, yes, put it, go to board right with it. I mean, there's, and it's not just employees, there's lots of little things, or grants, or there's things that committees can push through, department heads can push through without having committee meetings, just having committee updates over email, or that, that's fine with, and, and if you really wanted to meet that way on all your items, that doesn't matter, you know, however your committee works. But I would, I would, to get off the discussion, I would just like to make a motion to have all jobs come through the board for approval.
So we have a motion, by Barry, do we have a second? I will second that motion. So, do we have a motion and a second to revert, to have the committee, all, all jobs go through, come to the board, even if they're new? Do we have any further discussion?
So, Mr. Chair, is that all jobs or all new jobs?
All jobs.
All, all replacements.
You wanna determine if that job has a future, and if it's best served as part-time, full-time, or if you can even afford, if you're gonna, who the, who's the funding coming from if it, if it moves forward?
Current, currently, all new jobs already come through the committee and to the board.
That are not budgeted for.
Yeah, new jobs.
Auditions.
I mean, I, I didn't want to call this a hiring freeze or anything like that, because it's, it's, I think we're gonna be hiring most of these jobs back as-is, but I think, I think it's close, I mean, we've had those in the past, and I think if, if things continue, then might be where you go.
And, and then I'd also like to state too, that if we do pass this, we can all, we can, and, and, and things are not, what we could, what could happen, we could always go back to the way.
You can always alter it.
All, go back to the way we had it, yes.
So for clarification, I think what you're asking is the policy to be modified if, if this motion passes. I guess the other thing I'd like to put on your radar as you consider this, is that as a board, if these positions are gonna be coming back to board, you have to think about what is going, what questions are you going to be able to ask, and how, how are you going to decide? Because every position in department is different.
I think, you know, funding, you know, like for human services, future funding and secure, you know, security of that funding is gonna be a, a big question.
I think that's the biggest one, yeah.
Okay.
And, and a lot of other positions that have state funding, you know, just.
Or grant funding.
Sentenced to serve, what are we gonna do with that?
So we have a, we have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion?
Yeah, so just, just putting this into practice, so Dean Haberkamp with Environmental is, is, is going to retire, I don't know exactly when, but, so, so his replacement would have to come to us in, for us to approve that person, or to.
Not the person, the position.
The position.
So, so.
Before you hire for the position.
And the, and the budget number, right?
You always evaluate budgets.
So, so here's the thing to that, so we, we know, he, he gives a timeline when he's gonna retire, so now we have a timeline that we can get that information out when he retires, before, or right at, you know, or we can go through that process, then he reti, and then he retires.
Okay.
Let's not use a person as.
Yes, yeah, let's not use a person, it's just a position.
How did that happen before? The department head just.
Before 2022?
Well, we're making a change here, right?
This is going back to what we always did before 2022.
Yeah.
How did it happen before that?
In 2022, we changed the policy, if it was an already budgeted position, there was no, no, and somebody resigns or retires, they were able to just refill that position, because it was already budgeted.
The department head.
The department head.
It would have to go to committee.
With communication with their respective.
Yes, it would go to committee, and then they would, and then it would be advertised, or it could be advertised right away.
And for that, at that time, though, it was partially responsible, or why it was done is because we had such a delay in HR.
We did.
HR drug it down for so long that we just said.
Wasn't me.
But we did, we had a huge delay.
Is that clear?
Yeah, slowdown, and I, I think we've gotten through that, and.
And that's what I'm wondering, how much, how much do you think this is gonna slow this down? Because it was too slow before, and that's why we changed it. So it's, do you think it's gonna?
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking about the process, and, and if you put this into play, you know, on, behind the scenes, you know, think about the behind the scenes, then we have to vet questions, scoring questions, and all those kinds of things, you're really not doing perhaps a lot of that until, because I don't want necessarily HR staff to be doing all that behind the scenes if we don't know if the position's going to be approved. So, i- in answer to your question, it potentially could slow down the process, but maybe that's what we want.
Well, I could see it if there's a, if there's a question about the funding, you know, but some of these positions, there won't be any question about the funding.
Name, what, what positions are you?
Well, okay, well, I won't say a name, but the landfill, there's, there's no question about the funding there.
I got.
I see human services could be a big thing, like you're saying, but a lot of our departments, the funding is not gonna change, I don't see, you know, how it could, but.
And I, and I reference that too, like, the, the jail is 100% county funding, but, so, I think you, but I think even in, you know, you have to look at each one, there's so many different possibilities, it's tough to.
But I don't think, I don't think we can have a policy that says one department.
No.
Comes.
Right.
And the others don't.
The only thing is, is there any state or federal funding to that position?
Well, I mean, I think even if you look at.
What?
The jail position, I mean, we, we depend on federal.
Prisoners.
Funding for the, from the prisoners.
The prisoners, but not the.
But that, that funds the positions, that, that funding goes to the positions, I mean, I think.
Reimbursed for the.
Yeah. But if that stops, then what?
Yeah, then you quit that program.
But I mean, so that's.
You redo, you redo staff. Because of numbers. So, I mean, everything's up, I mean, there, all these programs are being looked at, there, all these programs are being looked at to be cut, so.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second.
So the motion is to go back to pre-2022, essentially.
22 or 23, I'm not sure of the year, somewhere in.
I'd like to try this and see that it doesn't, because it was way too slow before, and I see, Barry, that some, I see your point on some of them, but I'd like to, you know, I, I don't wanna see it go back to taking forever to hire.
Well, there, you know, if you wanna say supervise, you know, you know, supervisors, you know you have to replace a supervisor of, of a full department, so, but I don't know how you word that, maybe you're.
Yeah, I, I, I think.
In your example, what I'm, you know, the example that you were looking at.
I, but I think in, in a, the position of a retirement, if you know a retirement's coming.
There should be a lot of.
You got, you have time before that person leaves to, to get it approved.
Most of the time, most of the time.
Most of the time.
Do we have to wait until a board meeting, or could she call us?
No, you can't, I mean, if you want board approval, you cannot call the full board and ask.
That's beautiful, that would be a violation.
But I think, but I think for the committee, to bring it forth, forth to the, the committee, then you're really only looking at two weeks, if, if we have the ability to, as a committee, meet, like, human services, you and I have a teams or whatever it is to, to discuss this.
You know.
In between committee and board, so that the next board meeting it can.
I think that would work, yeah.
What we could do also is put board meetings for every Tuesday, and if you need those extra Tuesdays, that you could come in and do that.
No.
I mean, it would only, it would only take, I mean, if it was a. But we used to, we used to list three Tuesdays a month, in case there was any other business.
I think Tuesday enough, I'll go with trying this.
All right, let, we have a motion and a second, so do we have any more discussion? All right, let's, uh, let's vote, so all in favor of motion to adjust the personnel policy for hiring employees signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries.
That was easy.
All right, Carrie, we have some more stuff for you.
I guess so. So the next item was with regards to what I have been able to ascertain with regards to the Pelican River Watershed Building that's out at Dutton Locks. This has been a long process, finding and locating records and information. So it came before the board last time, and the question really, really was whether or not we could verify that money came to the county in a cooperative manner from, from Pelican Watershed to purchase the land that Dutton Locks, as we all know as Dutton Locks, the 56 acres out there. Initially, as we reviewed board minutes and such, just to give you a little bit of a backstory, how we do things now when we accept money, but there's a resolution that follows, and back in 1976, I don't think they did it that way. So we weren't able to find it initially in the resolutions, but in the financial records that are typed, that were in the basement, we did find in the financial records that we did in fact indeed receive 16,000 plus from, from the Pelican Watershed in a joint effort through a grant application to purchase, to purchase the land that we, again, now know as Dutton Locks Park. So with that said, this board did not take any action, because what we have before us now is the identification of a need for additional parking out there, and the watershed having a building out there that they, they used to store boats and canoes and, and different things, and, and how to proceed with that, if they need to relocate, if they stay in the building, et cetera.
So, Mr. Chair, I, I'm the one who kinda brought this up. First of all, w- we can keep it exactly the way it is, and if that's the wishes of the board, that's fine. I just thought, since Dunloks were building a new structure out there, I thought it would be nice to have more area, so that's the only reason, that, that was the impetus for this conversation.
Well, Phil, the conversation came long before you got on the board.
Oh, okay.
We were, we were, wanted, we wanted to get rid of that building a few years ago, but we just felt that this project needed to move forward before we.
Okay, all right.
Got into consideration.
I stand corrected.
And if I may, as well as this, when I go back and, and Mary and I reviewed the grant application, purpose of purchasing this land for this purpose, for, for recreational parks, you know, questionable about buildings, I'm not gonna say much about that, but the grant was for the purposes of public use in parks.
You know, as I reviewed what Tara had sent, thank you for pulling all that information, I mean, it, it's clear to me the watershed started the process, or was designated to do some of the work, as things coalesced, the county got more involved, but, you know, the money, 16, 775, that was an appraisal, and the money the watershed spent, but the county, which I didn't know until yesterday, Carrie, thanks for digging into all that information, the county did put 15,700 into it as well, and then there was state and federal funding as well, but, I mean, it's a huge asset to the county now, I mean, I don't think we would want that any other way, and I think the watershed deserves some of the credit for, for, for pushing that, that forward back in the day. What that looks like, I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, it's, we, we have to be fair to the watershed, they did, they did put money in there, so.
I think, I think, I think you're right, I think they, now that we have it, I think that 16, 775 is, shows that they, they are, have a stake in that, I don't have a problem reimbursing that and an interest rate to some, you know, to, I think, if you put a 50-year at 4%, that'd be just under $40,000, but, I mean, I, I think we need a, I mean, find, I think in the next two years, we do this jobs, or our space needs study, and see if there's, where we're moving everything, and, and where Pelican River Watershed Building, if we can assist in, if they're interested in the, at the fairgrounds, if the fair's looking at that, you know, there are some of those questions that we need to answer before we can, can decide what's the best fit for everyone, or what's a fair fit for anyone.
How do we keep this on the table then, so we can keep moving forward with it?
Well, I think Sheriff Glander's got the, the ball rolling with the, the impound building as well, and, and that's kinda, you know, everything needs to work, that, after that gets completed, then, then the old structures are gone, that, you know, then, then things start moving from there too, so.
Yeah.
I think Carrie's looking, and doing that, she went out and viewed the, the, where extension is and, and dive rescue and.
I think, I think you're right, I think one kind of domino affects the next.
But I don't think that building, I mean, this year will need to be moved, I mean, I think that, that's something for after completion of.
The other information.
You know, as far as, we're talking about a dollar amount here, the 16, 775, plus there was a, they built the building, the watershed built the building for five, $6,000 back then, I, I didn't think about the interest over the years, I mean, it's.
I think it's justified that we owe them money now, if we, if they hadn't paid anything, then, then we can't, in my mind, can't justify giving anything back, now, now we can, so.
Yeah, I think that would.
It might have to be, if we do it that way, it might have to be a little bit more, because things, inflation is really.
Right, but we, we've got some baselines.
I think we need to talk with these guys and work something out that we're both, that we both can, but.
Yeah, I would, could, would you please state your name?
Charlie Jaskin, the board manager.
Chris Jaskin, board manager.
I just wanna state that if parking is your intent as a, the county board, that's not the answer, removing that one building, that building is structurally sound. A fix is relocating those doors so it has access from when you drive in, that's, that's a short-term fix, but if you ultimately want that building gone for parking, that is not your answer, you have 47 acres on site, parking needs to be moved up on top, behind, up on the hill. If you're gonna spend money into parking, you need to look long-term and go up on the hill and do a parking lot up there. If we wanna relocate on-site, there's access off County 19, we can put a building back in the woods up there on-site, if, if we wanna remain in that area. I'm on local township as well, we work really good with your county highway and your zoning office, they're excellent, all your offices are good, and you have to continue that crosswork with the, with the Pelican Watershed as well. This is just opening discussions, we need to table this, and see what's gonna work for both parties.
Yeah, Charlie, there was no, there was just an update, this is nothing for.
I understand that.
But one thing too, is, is where the building's located, I, I suggested, if, if people would park correctly, there's enough room to park at angles on both sides and leave that alleyway open too.
We would only need two parking spots out of that whole parking area for the doors for the doors, if they were moved onto the north side of that building. That building is set back five feet from the property line, right up against the DNR fisheries. So it's tight back there, and it's not way up front. And if you haven't been out there and seen this location, I welcome you to go out and look at it. That building is structurally sound, I know the builder, Mark Holman, from nineteen eighty-seven, he put it up. The building is still sound, and it's kind of a waste of a resource for us to take it down. If it has to go, I understand it, that's, ultimately, it's going to probably be your decisions.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I think, I, I didn't disagree with anything you said, I mean, I was thinking of future parking. Um, you know, on the rack, we talked about the new building out there, but we also talked about recently, about gutting the old building and leaving it there. Um, you know, the, the, the troll is out there on that little pathway. Um, will that require more parking? The bowling alley in town, where a lot of people park and walk their dogs out to Dun, Dun Locks, and, um, you know, it, it's, it's really a futuristic thing. I think right now, we're fine. However, I just, I think we got to think down the road, and maybe this is the start of it, the building's still good. Um, we stay, stay there for now. I mean, that's my opinion.
But that door being on the gable end on the east side, that eats up a lot of space. That eats up, all that space has to stay open. And maybe it's just a Band-Aid, but if you ultimately need parking, you need to go up on the hill behind the site, behind the park, and think of having an entrance from up on higher ground to overlooking par, um, parking lot up on top. If I was looking strategically, long-term, that's what I'd look at.
Steve, can we change the door?
Those doors can be changed on, that's, you just have to put a header in constructionally.
They're taller now, uh, which we don't have a requirement for that, for what we.
The height?
In there, it's not tall stuff.
You're talking about the other end of the building?
Put it on the side.
There's not a, it's not a wetland or anything going through that?
There's no fill on the drive, as you drive in, it's, it's level ground all the way to the building there. In fact, that would be the access to that building. It'd be two parking spots, so. We're talking about stuff that a lot of you probably haven't seen, so, be, before we talk about it again, I welcome you to go out and, uh, do a tour of this location.
Well, I think everyone's been on-site.
Yeah, I've, I've been there.
Specifically looking at a area, you know, to where a door could go, maybe, I'd have to review that part, you know, to see how that looked again, to, and see how many spaces that would add for us. But no, we're, we're, um, I think we're open to any discussions, and this is, again, this is, we're talking next year, if the earliest.
At the earliest, yeah.
To do much of anything, really.
But I think we can look at maybe moving the doors sooner than that, but, if possible, I don't know, or, or if the building's not going to go, be there, I don't know if we want to.
We still haven't decided what we're doing with the old building.
Yeah, so, yeah, let's just, yeah, let, yeah, no, but thank you. We, uh, can have some good discussion. Um, yeah. Any, anybody else have anything for?
So, this subject is tabled?
Yes.
And I'm happy to do that, I just.
Well, yeah, we, we, it was going to be, it was just informational.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie.
There was no.
No action.
Okay.
Um, Carrie, we still have you.
And, uh, I'll, I'll go to my last item, but I, if I may, just perhaps after I'm done this, maybe you want to take a break?
Well, we can do, we, do you want?
I'll finish my last item, if that's okay.
Okay, we have two actually left.
Oh, you're right.
So then we'll take a break.
Thank you. All right, so the next item, um, is a joint training opportunity. I'm going to ask Amy if you want to come up front. Um, I asked Amy, and there is a memo in your packet, this is a conversation that's been had between, um, the county, uh, the city, four twelve, the chamber, am I missing anybody?
Nope, that's everyone.
Um, so, we had been, uh, meeting, just talking about community needs, and, and what we can collaborate on more. And I'm going to actually let you just give the highlights of this, uh, training opportunity, because I know you've done the research.
Sure, absolutely. Good morning, everyone. My name is Amy Sterns, and I'm with Project Four Twelve, and we have an opportunity to bring in a gentleman named Jeff Siegler, and I think I've talked with many of you before about him, he's a, a gentleman who's a kind of a, a civic planner, he looks at, um, when you're just having the discussion about parking lots, uh, his big thing is, don't build more parking lots. Uh, people will find, be worried about what you're bringing people to town for, to the county for, uh, they'll figure out where to park. Uh, but of course, there's always a need for parking lots, so. But anyway, um, he, we have an opportunity to bring him in, he is, uh, he talks a lot about, uh, what are future planning, uh, Mr. Hanson had talked about, uh, need for strategic planning, that could possibly be a start of it. Uh, but we're, what we're looking at doing is bringing him in in mid-May, uh, to tie in with the regional Chamber of Commerce's annual meeting, and to have him here for two days of meeting with people, looking at our community as a, as a bigger picture, and seeing where we might want to go with some different projects and, and ideas, and we'd love to have the support of the county, we're requesting three thousand dollars from the county, from the Detroit Lakes Development Authority. Project Four Twelve will put in three thousand dollars, and the chamber is going to do some in-kind, and so, to bring it all together, and there'd be an opportunity for you as a board to meet with him, or he could be part of some sort of ad hoc training meeting, or whatever you'd like to do, we could figure that out with Carrie as it goes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank Amy for coming in and presenting, and, um, I just think Project Four Twelve has been great for this community, it really separates this community, this area, this region, from, from other places, and, and thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
I would, uh, move to approve the three thousand dollars, uh, in conjunction with the other entities to, for this, to bring this, uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Same Jeff?
Jeff Siegler, yep.
So we have a motion to approve the don, the donation of three thousand dollars to bringing Jeff.
Siegler.
Yep, yeah. Siegler to, to, to our community. Um, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion?
I guess I think this is probably better fitted for EDA to.
That's, was going to be my discussion, yeah.
To spend money on, I think that our economic development is, um, reviews countywide, and I, I, I just think, if it was going to be spent, I think EDA would be where the money's come from, and, um, piggyback with what, what we're trying to do countywide, but, I, I do have to say thank you for everything that Four Twelve has done. I'm, I'm lukewarm at best for spending this kind of money anyway, but, um, I understand people that, that think it's, has value. But I, I won't, as a, for the county to spend the money, I, I won't support it. If the EDAs choose to support it, I think that would be more appropriate. But, that's my opinion.
Is it, is it appropriate, Carrie, to amend, and if it's a good, if it's a good, the motion is to amend that for the funding to come from EDA?
I think I could have to go through EDA first.
Yeah, to go to EDA first.
Uh, you know, I, I'll amend that, I'll amend that, that motion to go through EDA, I don't want to start a precedent that hasn't been started before.
I don't either. I, the only thing is, I know that she's very dedicated to our community, and three thousand is not, I, I don't want to waste money either, it's not a huge amount, I think she's done, she's done a lot for, for bringing people here, so. Uh, but I think it should probably go through the EDA, I think, I think Barry's right about that.
Okay, so my amended motion would be?
I don't know that we need a motion.
I would, if you're going to make a motion, you would recommend EDA to support.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that because the money will need to come through the EDA board.
So does Amy need to go the next time the EDA meets, and?
Well, she, the request to go to the EDA, or whether you go and ask in person or.
All right, then, then I'll.
Or you could just resell.
I withdraw the motion, then.
Do, my only, my only thought is, is if we want to go through the EDA, the EDA doesn't meet until the third Tuesday, or third Thursday, which is going to be after the next board meeting, so then the soonest it would come back to the board.
It doesn't come back to this board.
Well, that, typically, though, I thought, EDA stuff comes.
I believe so. Does it?
To the board for approval?
Well, I, I also think it's a low dollar amount as well.
Yeah, that's, that's my only thing, it's not, that's not a huge amount of money anymore, it used to be, that's not a huge amount of money.
I, I think the EDA would be able to prove that easily, so. Good. So is that consensus of the board?
We'll go to the EDA.
Yeah.
That's just fine, whichever way to do it is fine with me.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Yeah, and, and just for clarification, I, I just thought it was important for the board to hear an update on this as well, so.
All right, uh.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Amy. Carrie, we have one more item for you, then we are taking a break.
All right, I am going to pass, pass the mic to Steve.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board Members. For a number of years, Becker County, along with the state, has been looking at amending the demolition building materials rules on how you landfill those, and as a result of PFOS that they found in the groundwater, and, uh, the MPCA recently came out with some grant rounds to help foster regional planning on how to deal with the impact of changing the rules of a demo landfill. So they, they, they released a grant round that will give up to three hundred thousand dollars if counties come together and start doing regional planning. And the state will cover ninety percent of that cost. Uh, the seven counties in, in Prairie Lakes Municipal Solid Waste Authority, along with Pope and Douglas Counties are joining together right now to, uh, apply for a grant. And this grant would be administered in a couple of different phases. One is, the counties would initially make a proposal to the state, and then, in that proposal, we'd be having our ask, which would be to do a study of our current facilities, and what would be, what the impact of the rules would be on the counties and in the region, and then also to find out what the impact, both financially and, uh, what it would do to different parts of the communities that are involved. So this is a, this is a big study, so that, once you do this initial ask, the grant would actually cover a firm, the cost to hire a firm to do the, to do the study, and then bring it back. And so, what we're asking is that Becker County participate in this regional study, and the other counties have committed. Uh, initially, they were, we were talking about going through Prairie Lakes Municipal Solid Waste Authority, and then the decision was made to not go through and have Prairie Lakes do the fiscal management of this. Otter Tail County will be the lead. And so, uh, right now, if the max amount, and everybody participated, the cost of Becker County would be eighty-four hundred dollars. That's not saying it'll necessarily be that amount, because uh, cost will be for the consultant.
So if the study, the study and, and everything should be at or under three hundred thousand?
Correct.
We're not, I mean, there's not going to be a request to go.
And if it's, and if it's at three hundred thousand, the cost would be eighty-four hundred.
Eighty-four hundred, the only, the risk you would run that if some of these counties pull out, and, and then, you said. I, I myself, I don't see that happening, because I just got this yesterday, and they said, they gave these numbers, and these other counties have committed to it, that's my understanding. And I'd like to be able to expand this, and maybe include maybe Norman or Monoman County if they're interested. I don't think that would change it much, but it'd be a little bit.
Is White Earth part of this?
White Earth would be part of this, but the portion that's in Becker County would be covered by Becker County.
Steve, what, uh, so we talked about this a little bit at the Prairie Lakes meeting, a little bit, so I'm, I'm still coming up to speed. What, what are we trying to gain from this study? What will it tell us at the end of the day?
Sure. That's a good question. So, what's going to happen when they change these rules is more, more than likely, a number of these demo landfills will disappear, they just can't afford to operate them. They're going to require that liners will be put into place, you have leachate control, you're going to have to do different things, you have different management practices. And as a result, you're going to have more, you'll, you'll have less landfills, but the ones that you have will be larger, and always our intent has been to keep ours open if possible, and it's become more like a sub-region landfill, so other counties, it's called a hub-and-spoke system. So if you have demo that's coming from a smaller county that's shutting theirs down, they might create a place where they can collect that, and then transfer it over to our facility, or to the nearest one that will take it. This will also look at creating rules on ways that we can work together to, more to equalize differences between tip fees, or how we want to fund demolition landfills going into the future. And then, when the study is done, hopefully what we're going to be doing is looking at where our needs are, both from landfill and our capacity, but also in, in our communities, where do we want to create capacity so that residents can get rid of this stuff, without having to go a long distance? And once you do that, we'll identify those costs and what the needs are to do that. Let's say, for example, at Osage, we decide, well, we're going to create more capacity there, well, would we, as a county, what, do we have additional infrastructure that we would like to be put in place? There, that would allow us to better handle that demolition there and get it here, or maybe at our facility, where we have, is there better ways that we can prep that material and pull more out of the waste stream, so it's not all landfills? Those, those ideas and thoughts will be looked at. And once those costs are identified, that would be sent to the MPCA, and when they start adopting these rules, you'll have the background data that's going to identify the costs that you need for infrastructure. And then the state would help cover some of those costs, that's the, that's the hope.
So, who would be, I, I talked to Chris over there, and he said, you know, he didn't think it was a joint powers that he should lead it, who's going to be heading this up?
So, I talked to Chris yesterday after I talked to you, and Otter Tail County will be the lead.
Okay, so Otter Tail, so Chris is the guy at Otter Tail, and he's the joint powers guy, so he's leading up on behalf of Otter Tail County?
And the rest of the participating counties. So what he was doing, and he sent me an email on this, they're going to come up with a list of things that they want each county to put together for them, when he's packaging together this request to the MPCA, that they're going to want to know certain things, like what's our volume, what are our plans? What, what does Becker County want out of this? And they're going to need some background data to look at that, and then look at it holistically, so they're going to ask for the same information from these different counties. And then the Otter Tail County will then package that together in that request, so he's going to be reaching out to consultants, and saying, okay, what's, when we move forward on this, these are, these are what we want you to look for, and to examine, and come back with a report on, and then they'll come back with a cost, or, so it'd be like RFP. So he would be heading that first step. The second step would be then when we actually get a grant awarded to do that study, and once that study's done, this will go back to the state, along with a request, I believe, that says, this is what we want to make this happen, and they're going to be looking not, like I said, not just at how much landfill space that's going to be needed in this region, they're going to look at how do you get it there, which would be transportation? And then how many sites do you need to where you can best fit places where you can collect it?
So a very comprehensive plan?
It's going to be a very, this is the biggest plan that I've seen.
And it's a competitive grant?
You know, it's, it's competitive in, in the fact that they won't let an individual county or entity apply on their own, you have to be part of at least three counties or three entities to apply.
The, the concern many counties have is that Minnesota Push Control and gather all this information, and then they impose rules on you when you give them the information. They're saying, well, now we have identified you're over this, or over that, and make you shut down, or make you, so there's concerns on counties. And the other thing with, 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 um, the state's not giving these renewals, and they're just sitting on them, even if you jump through all the hoops, so, it's, the state has a mess. I mean, I don't know, I don't know if this is part of their solution to find out how they can regionalize and, and fix something, but these smaller counties are not getting their renewals for their landfills, and, and they're, they're struggling, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what the state's plan is, and I don't know if this is part to, to betterment, to make it better, or just to gather information, or to make their case stronger, I don't know.
Personally, I think it's a combination thereof, because the, the counties north of us had did a study, a very extensive study. They approached the legislature, looking for funding for that, it was too much, and they, and they, they wouldn't fund it. I think the state is looking, if they're, they're planning on rolling out the new demo rules, I heard in one meeting, that first quarter of twenty-five, they're planning on starting the rulemaking process. And I think they want to find out what will be the impact, you know, what's, what's going to be the need moving forward, and this is part of that, to incentivize counties to gather information, put together plans on what they're going to do to react to the change in the rules. Because they, they don't know what the impact will be, but it, it will be pretty significant. As, as Commissioner Nelson indicated, the amount of demo landfill space out there isn't, it's, they're holding back expansions. Some have shut down already, Monoman County had one, they shut their facility down a couple of years ago.
There's numerous counties waiting years, years and years and years, I mean, to get permitted, and they just, they don't respond. So, I'm not saying this is bad, but I just.
Well, it is information. I don't, I don't know that I want to take everybody else's demo material here in Becker County, I don't. I, I know we need to take care of our own, we definitely do. I don't know that we need everybody else's.
Well, we don't have the capacity for it.
Well, those are, those are things that a study would look at, they would look at that versus, maybe, maybe you should have one regional one, I, I don't know that. I, I don't know that. I don't know that, but that's, that's what you hire.
Where would this money come from out of your budget?
It would. It would come from our profession.
It is good, it, it is good information, Barry.
It was great information. What, how it's used might not be good.
Yeah, and I agree with you there, but we maybe are better off to be, it is a big thing, and we're maybe better off to be part of it and no part of it.
I, I think we move forward with it, but I, there are concerns.
I do, I have the same concerns you have.
Well, if we do move forward and they do this study and they determine this stuff, do we have to follow it then?
No.
If we are outside of guidelines, yes.
Okay, outside of guidelines.
If they change policy because of that.
Yeah, okay. If they change policy because of, then we, okay. That's a little, that's.
But they're already doing that. They're shutting down these demos, so they're, so.
So what?
Actually, this could help us, could help our case.
I think that's the intention.
If it shows.
That's why we're moving forward, because we're hoping it will move, help us. And I think we want to take care, I mean, there's lots of concerns in it, I think, but you just go in it with eyes wide open that this.
Right.
This has some possible costs effectively.
So do we have a motion to approve the memorandum for action to become regional planning for demolition waste study?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Which also costs, I'll see, up to $8,400. So Richard.
Could it be more than 8,400?
No.
No. If it would, it would have to be brought back to the board.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
Mr. Chair, it's, it's the County Board motion to support participating in the application for MPCA grant for regional planning of disposal building of waste. Is that the?
That motion? Yeah. That is the motion with a max of $800, $8,400.
Yeah. 8,400.
8,400. Is that good for both?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, we have motion, a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
So we'll be back here in five minutes.
Just a point of information, the new, the courthouse building was purchased by, was built by EDA. The money was flowed.
So we'll, we'll move on to planning and zoning with Kyle.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I have planning recommendations for you from January 29th. The first applicant being Lakeside Estates, which is a supplemental plat for 10 lots to be known as Grand View Estates on Nelson Lake. It's a supplemental plat to a current common interest community. I know there was some opposition to this in the previous years. We had not seen any of that opposition, basically for, I think, the fact that this was approved in 2002 for 38 units. It's just kind of a more phased development. So the units have been approved. It's been amended in there a time or two for different things from fourplexes to actual residential lots. The area is zoned high-density residential. It's the only area I know that has that. That was done in 2012. So we do have high density in our ordinance, but this is the only parcel I know of that actually is zoned that way. But again, there was some opposition and maybe some misunderstanding that this project has been approved, they just do it in phases.
There's no lake access with these, is there?
There is a total of 14 slips for the project itself. I'm not.
So how they divide those slips is up to them?
Through the declarations.
But there's no new additional lake slips?
Right. Yeah. So I mean, the whole shore is common. You can swim, whatever, but a slip would have to be through the bylaws if you get.
Is it over, is it over on the point or, but in the southeast corner kind of?
Northeast. There's.
Get in those lakes, it's hard to figure your directions, but.
Yeah, so.
This is past Agapi Acres and kind of north of that.
Yes. And the project is on the point, but these current structures are going to be to the east and then I believe the southwest. But yes, that's subject property.
Do we have a, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the supplement plat.
You have a mo, second?
I'll second.
Motion by Erica, second by Richard. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries.
The second application was with John. I did hear earlier some of your discussion on the industrialization of wholesale and growing it. That's something we can look at in this ordinance update. We kind of knew this was going to be trial and error when we adopted these regs. But again, that's been with John. Not to say, I do know there is an inquiry in Erie Township, so we most likely will see this again. But again, we can look at amending as we go.
Just to make sure on the time-sensitive part of it, that we make sure if it's over the 60 days that we have rational reasons for, for delaying it, and we don't get caught in that automatic.
Approval?
Approval.
Yes, sir.
And, and I think with the state not having their rules figured out, we should be, hopefully that we have some extra time when, when the state doesn't have the rules.
Right. And that was discussed there as well. I mean, we had quite the discussion, but. A third applicant, Mincota Power Co-op requesting a conditional use permit for a substation. This will be going adjacent to an existing substation owned by Ottertail Power. Mincota explained that this one will enhance their current substation known as the Erie Substation on Erie Hill. Recommendation was to approve.
I'll move to approve the Mincota Co-op request for conditional use permit.
Second.
Second by Barry. Motion by Phil, second by Barry. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Kyle, one more thing. Just can we, you sent me an email yesterday about the ordinance review. Can you take me through that? You said it might take a little longer than expected. Are, you know, me and Barry and I are on the ordinance review committee, so the processes, you're going to do what, and then when do we come into the picture, and what does that look like?
So the DNR, Roger Hemp Hill, Soil and Water, Ed Clem, and then Scott Walls, who's the advisory committee chairman, and I have met once. We're going to continue to meet through March, just ironing out some of these things. Once we have something for you to review, we'll call that meeting to order. So hopefully about the end of March, we'll have this done.
Okay.
But again, it is lengthy. It's 100 and some pages, 160 some pages.
Sure.
You know, we would like to be done by, you know, the construction season, but just vetting it through the public and other government agencies might take some time, as you guys seen with the comp plan. This is regulatory, so I'm assuming it's going to be even.
Are we, are you doing multiple ordinances through this process and?
Entire.
Kind of revising our old ordinances and putting them, so our old ordinance are standing until this is.
Yes, but we're going to go through the entire thing.
Yeah, and I, we, I've got a copy, an old copy of that. I mean, the revised one, and maybe you could find one of those for Phil so he can review it?
Yep.
Because I did a lot of markups on that one, but it, it's hu, it's huge.
About this thing.
And we reviewed it once, months ago. I mean, but we didn't dive into that at all.
Well, and part of the problem with the document itself, you know, originating back in the early 70s till now, it's been amended probably 40 some times with different ideas throughout those years and different interpretations. And when we dove into it, it's just contradicts itself.
Yeah, and that's what Kyle's, I think, caught, taking so much time. But so, once the ba, basic, the big job gets done, there will be opportunities to amend or change or add after that also. I mean, the.
Right.
On the, on the ordinances. So if, if we miss something or got something wrong or want to add something new, we can always do that through our, through our committee. But as Kyle's working for the big project to get it, the baseline down, I suppose that takes, you know, quite a bit of time.
Well, and just, just to be clear, part of the, you know, so the last time we met, we discussed retaining walls. I think we met at, I don't know, an hour or two, and we, we did not establish any language. This last meeting with just the four of us, we established paragraphs of language. I mean, it just goes a lot smoother with, you know.
It goes a lot smoother with one person doing it, but if you want any.
Well, I mean, and we will have to have the input.
Right.
You know, but to develop the language itself instead of 10 people doing that.
We sit in that advisory committee meeting and we'll argue about a sentence for, you know, quite some time. If you have a group of 10 people in there, it's.
Right.
It's, it's, so at that time, you'd just take a, you know, one, you'd, you'd look at two or three things a day trying to, trying to get through them. So if you can get that big document kind of, and then we can look through it and.
But ultimately, to Phil's point, just so, to Phil, just to fill you in, this ordinance will not come before this board without a recommendation from that advisory committee. So it has to. We're just trying to do some legwork to alleviate time limits is all.
And, and Mr. Chair, so we just did this over the past year with the watershed, so it's very important to me at a high level that we are talking together, so the end re, and the customer at the end is getting the same message from the county and the watershed. That's, that's the end result, which I think is very important. You know, we did, we're the same thing at the watershed. We have these best management practices. Well, we, we adopted them. Did they become actual rules or are they just suggestions? So that's why we went through that. And you just mentioned that, you know, there's been a lot of things that have changed over the years. So this is something we should do and, and hopefully we're sending the end user, the customer, our residents, a, a singular message. So that's, that's what's important.
I think that's what the key is here, is you, you get in, I mean, we can look at specific parts of the ordinance that affect what we're, but Kyle's job is to marry all these things together, and that's what's difficult, so you're not having conflicting statements throughout your ordinance.
Right, and I, and I know there has been discussion on the MOU as well, so according to that MOU, it's in effect, okay, until we enter into a long-term shoreline management agreement. Hopefully we can do that sooner and later, but again, just see how, how long the public review takes of the document.
I'd rather take the time and do it right than try to hurry like, like you mentioned. I wanted to roll it out this spring, but it, let's get it right.
Well, Pelican, Pelican watershed can roll out theirs with the understanding that we have the, an existing agreement, and we're, the county is trying to modify and then amend if there's any changes. Is that what we're looking at?
Essentially, yes.
Anything else for Kyle? All right, thanks, Kyle.
Mr. Chair, I'll leave this for you.
I would recommend getting him a copy of that. I mean, just, just to look at the old ordinance. I mean, the ones that, that DDA, or was it DDA?
No, no, no.
Walton Bank?
No, you gave.
We had that huge document, so I mean, at least you get your, get a little understanding of it.
I talked to Nicole. Have her run me a hard copy.
I'll put it in the mailbox.
Thank you.
But it's nice to, I like writing on them, you know, when you're reviewing like that.
All right, so.
Thank you.
Tiara, we have job descriptions.
I'd like to go by through them one at a time.
I mean, this is, this is your meeting, so absolutely, we can go right on ahead and do that.
I think, I think I've been in meetings with most of these.
Yeah, me too.
Is there any, any questions through the sheriffs?
The sheriff's committee, we did not bring any of those job descriptions forward. They will be coming hopefully next month.
There was a couple of small questions on them.
There was some questions on them, so yes, they will be coming forward hopefully either the later part of this month or beginning of next. But other than that, yes, they've gone through all the respective committees. They've been approved by department heads. They've been vetted.
Think they were vetted pretty well and those that haven't are still being vetted, so.
I don't have any questions.
I didn't have any questions either.
I don't have any questions.
Motion approved.
Do we have a second to approve the job description?
I'll second.
Second, okay. So a motion by Barry, second by Richard, he beat you. Any, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, motion carries. Thanks, Tiara.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Morning.
Morning.
Jim.
Hi, we have a couple items for your consideration. First is a looking, seeking authorization to approve a contract, professional service contract with Houston Engineering to provide construction services on the Heartland Trail construction this summer. They have an estimate of around a little under $154,000. That's based off of their time and expenses, and it will be paid for with the state bond funds that we seek reimbursement through the DNR on. So I don't know if you have any further questions?
It's 100% reimbursable except for your time that gathering it. Is that correct?
Correct. Our, our time is actually reimbursable too.
Okay, good.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the construction service agreement for the Heartland Trail?
I'll make a motion. Come on, Richard.
Erica makes a motion. Would you like to second it, Richard?
Yeah, I'll second.
Richard will second it. All right, any, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, motion carries.
Second item is a capital purchase request. We had a pressure washer fail at our Osage shop. We are seeking to replace that. We have an estimate on the unit, which we feel will serve us well, for $6,700 for an electric pressure washer that would be propane heated and replaces a one that was an old gas one that was run off kerosene to heat the water. So we figured that energy should last long. The old one is about, was purchased in 2008, so we, we did get our money's worth out of that one. And it's not a planned purchase, but we do have money in our budget.
Mr. Chair, just a question. I know this is a long shot, but one of the decontamination units from Soil, from Soil and Water was, this was, wasn't needed anymore, and that's probably not accurate or good enough. That was heated pressure washer also.
It is. Yeah, that, we are currently using that out there.
That's what you're using?
We're, yeah. We're, that's parked in there. It does take up space, and then we have a makeshift exhaust vent for that one because that's a gasoline-powered one as well. This will be like a permanent fixture. Won't be moved around.
So you just mentioned the reason why it's not good in there. It's a gas-powered one. It's out, an out for outdoors, more of a mobile one, but.
Correct, correct.
So you are utilizing it, but just this fit is not.
So, I mean, we could use that one through this year if you wanted us to wait till next year, but I think this amount of, for this unit, we can work within our budget this year.
Do we have a motion to approve the purchase of the pressure washer for $6,700?
Do you have any other uses for the mobile one? That would just be, I mean.
Yes, we use that for jetting and steaming culverts. That, that was a great gift from them for us to use, and that will be used this spring and for other uses as well.
I think, you know, I think this probably, it's in a, I assume it's a needed purchase, whether it's now or later in the spring, so get it set up. Get it set up now.
I'll make a motion.
All right, we have a motion, motion by Richard. We have a second.
I'll second.
All right, second by Erica. All in favor, or any discussion?
Well, one discussion, just, so this was $6,700. Is there, is it a $5,000 limit that needs to come before the board? Is that right? $5,000 and more. Needs to come, okay, all right.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Todd, we have half a shade. Sheriff Glander.
Are you clearing your throat so you can make it through the list?
I should have brought a water with me.
I add to both your cough drops, so.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As Commissioner Nelson said, law committee meeting hence a long list of items for approval and discussion. Item number one, we are looking for approval to purchase a, it's an analog recording device through Nelson Systems for a cost of.
$6,999.
$6,999.95. This will give us the capability of recording more channels on our radio system, which there have been times where we went to look back and the items, or the recordings aren't there because we don't have enough space. So this would.
And this is out of a grant.
This is out of our grant.
Correct.
Motion approved.
We have a motion to purchase the analog card. We have a second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two is a request to purchase squad car equipment with a total cost of $91,172.53, and this is in our budget.
As regular purchase. I just wanted to point out that if you see there's five squads and, and six computers, one of those computers is a replacement for existing because our cars last a lot longer than our computers, so.
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the purchase of the squad equipment?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Item number three, this is for appointing someone to our Northwest Regional Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chair, Amanda Mist, who made the motion?
Barry made the motion.
Sorry, I coughed at the second.
I'm sorry, I should have stayed.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Todd.
Okay, item number three is a request to put Chief Deputy Shane Richard on the Northwest Regional Advisory Committee. He's been on there for, I think, since 2012, if I heard right. It would just make sense to continue with him, and the alternate would be Joan Stinger, who was our communications supervisor.
Mr. Chair, just for information, this is, we didn't even know if we should bring this, but they kind of had some language that they wanted. We didn't know if it was board approval, but anyway, so I'll make a motion to approve Shane as a appointee and Joan as the alternate for the Northwest Emergency Communication Board member.
We have a second.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
The RAC committee appointments, was that a mistake to put that in there? Is there some connection with the Northwest Emergency?
No. It's a, it's a different RAC.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Regional Advisory Committee.
Okay, sorry.
Northwest Regional Advisory. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, motion carries.
It should actually be NEC, right, Northwest Emergency.
Yeah, but it's, it's called the RAC Committee when they, in their group. I don't know why.
Regional Advisory.
Yeah, regi, yeah, just, that's what it's called. All right, Todd, go, go ahead.
Item number four, we are requesting to sell our 2013 STS truck. It's a Ford F-150. We are looking at disposing, selling that through auction or if there's another entity, you know, within the county that could use this.
You'd give it to?
We would sell it to that part of the county.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to authorize the sheriff to, to sell the, and we need a, we need a VIN number, but to sell the.
It should be in your packet.
150 truck, the VIN number included, at a public auction or transfer it to another agency within Becker County.
I will second. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
A 13 Ford F-150, one FT, blah, blah, blah.
All right, Todd, next.
Okay, item number five, we have an emergency management trailer that we purchased last year, and we would like to add a mobile radio for that unit. The, the cost is $8,769.19. That is through Motorola. Currently don't have one, so again, we would like to put one in there, and that is also in our budget.
This was vetted quite extensively, probably because of our lengthy meeting, because resulting in our lengthy meeting. I questioned whether we needed it in there, and they gave many examples, and we went through many situations. Sheriff Glander and, and the staff explained how, why this was needed more so than, than just relying on your own radio. So I ended up supporting it, putting a radio in that emergency trailer.
So do we have a motion to approve the purchase of the radio?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, Phil, motion by Barry, second by Phil. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, opposed? Motion carries.
Item six is our 2023 Emergency Management Performance Grant, and the contract agreement term is effective from January 1 of '23 through June 30 of '25. And yes, they are behind for whatever reason, but the, the grant agreement is, it's a matching agreement for $27,383. And this is used to pay the salary, part of the sali, salary for our deputy emergency manager.
You accept? Accept it? Motion to accept?
We need a motion to accept.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion by Barry, second by Phil. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same opposed? Motion carries. All right, next one, Todd.
Item number seven, we are, we would like to sell our old trailer that is currently holding our side-by-side extended cab side-by-side utility vehicle. That utility vehicle with the tracks is, it extends out over the back of the trailer, and it's at weight capacity. It's, it's pushing capacity. So we would like to purchase a new trailer, a 20-foot trailer, and sell the, the old trailer. The, the one we are looking at, we have two quotes in front of you. One is for an 18-foot for $71.90 and a 20-foot for $73.48. I would like approval to go with the 20-foot, where we can not only haul the side-by-side, but also an ATV along with that.
What's the estimated value of your trailer you're going to trade?
I didn't.
It was pretty significant though, isn't it? It's a fairly good trailer.
It's a, it's a new trailer.
Mr. Chair, Todd, how, how is this used in the, where do you use the, not the trailer, but the, what you put on it?
The side-by-sides?
Yeah.
Obviously, it, you know, it comes with tires, wheels, and that is used for rescue, you know, anywhere in the county. When we put the tracks on, obviously it can go over snow, and basically any, any rescue situation, that's going to be one of the first vehicles to be called out.
Are, are these used out of it like WeFest too?
Yes, yeah.
Because I see.
We actually borrowed Clay County's last year, same, same vehicle that, that we just bought.
So how many, go, go ahead.
I was going to say, this was purchased with our lawn, or, excuse me, legislative funds through the state.
How many hours do you get on those a year, or miles, or how?
It, it varies. You know, we get, we get funds for ATV, Stonewall Patrol. Just depends on the weather, obviously, the, how busy we are. It varies from year to year.
I assume this will replace like a four-wheeler down the road, so we won't be, you know, you're not going to.
We, we are, we do have a, a single cab side-by-side. That does have a medical carrier, medical person carrier in the back of that. It's.
I'm thinking the little four-wheelers. I mean, we're, that's what we used to kind of patrol or watch for.
Yeah, and, and depends on what trails we're on. There's trails out there that aren't intended for the, the class 2 ATV, which that's what this vehicle is that we're discussing now.
Where are these things stored at?
The impound building.
The impound.
Right now, where they stored at?
Transit, or, yeah.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the purchase of the 20-foot trailer for $7,348?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the 20-foot trailer for $73.48, noting the reason why we didn't go with the lower quote. A smaller, smaller trailer did not accommodate both units on the trailer. Could not accommodate both units on the trailer.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Great. Motion by Barry, second by Erica. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Item number eight, I probably should have put that at the end of the list here, but we'll move forward anyway. This is just an update on our impound building. We call it an impound building because that's where many years is at our impound site. It's not just an impound building, but it's a storage building for the equipment that, some of the equipment we're talking about here. We've been discussing this for 10 years, and the board gave approval to go out at this point and search for items to be put into a spec sheet for spec build, whatever you want to call it. We received the spec sheet for the building, but we have yet to reach out to the plumbing side and the electrical side. I did reach out to the plumbing, but the, the person that I spoke to were, they were busy on another project, so I'm waiting to get in touch with them again to sit down and go through this.
Maybe just for, you know, for Phil's education, we, the board approved to, or the board asked our consultant to look into this, and they came back, they, they asked our people that we've worked with, our, our construction managers, what it would cost to do a, like a concrete or, or steel structure. I think they looked more at steel, and the price was considerably higher than what we were probably willing to expand at the time. You know, you're, they were talking in that $4 million range for an impound building. It has no office space. It's just storage, a workstation, a storage for, for another entity such as DNR that we'd rent space back to them.
STS.
STS, dive rescue. I mean, a lot of entities would have space out there that need, need some of that space. It's a big, it's a considerable size, but we felt 4 million was not a price point where we were real interested in. So what we're looking at now is more of a stick built or pole building. Depends on how, what we're looking at with, there'd be a bathroom in there, obviously, but considerably less expensive. We're looking, you know, who knows where that price would come in, but it's considerably less than half that, I would assume.
Yep.
You know, end product, so.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of questions. So, and, and thank you for bringing me up to speed a little bit here. So are we talking about an impound building or an impound lot?
Both. The lot would be behind it and the building would be.
Fully staffed?
No, nobody in there.
Okay. Well, you talked about a bathroom and all this office space.
Yeah, this is just for storing our equipment, and we also would like a space in there, like, for example. for example, we currently have evidence, well, we have evidence stored in several different places, but if we take a vehicle, for example, for evidence, a lot of, we'll have to go through that vehicle, whether it be with a search warrant or what have you, to gather evidence from that vehicle, and then that has to be stored in a secure place. And right now, we are paying for that storage for, currently, for a vehicle that we have in, in evidence. And, and again, not only evidence, but all our equipment, our boats, ATVs, side-by-sides, command post, the emergency trailer.
Bearcat.
Bearcat, when that finally comes to us. And again, you know, what we've run into is we have equipment scattered in several different places. At one, it was eight different locations that we have equipment. When we have a situation, we have an emergency arise, we're constantly, okay, where did we put that last? Where is that being stored now? And honestly, we can't have that anymore. We, we have to figure this out and move forward with one building that will encompass everything that we have. So that's what we're trying to get accomplished.
You know, isn't the city working on this, too? Don't they have needs in there? Is there any way they could work together to reduce the cost, or not?
Not likely.
Yeah. And plus, I think
Not likely, or no?
No.
No.
Okay.
Let's just end the conversation.
Yeah.
We, we looked extensively at joining with the city on a public works building, and through all the research, everything would have to be separate. I mean, in the sheriff's case, if you have a secure, something that's like a vehicle that's supposed to be secure, now you have that many more people with access. In this building, though, we do have a portion of it that the DNR would like to rent some space. Now, I'm not really sold that we should, but it would give us room to grow into that, and that would be a petition, a wall petition separating that, but then that gives us additional space in future without building. So it would have the future, well, we can get income for temporary, or short-term, we will have long-term. But, and we go one step, we want to get one step deeper in this. The funding of this building, which we just don't have the cash to spend even, whatever, whatever it is, our, our bond payment for our courthouse is coming off, Mary, in what?
27.
Early '27, isn't it?
February 27.
So what I would, if we have to bond, when we build this, we bond and extend, so we put it at the end, so it's not a spike in taxes. So that bond payment is currently about $550,000 annually. So we can start looking at, you know, that will come off in '27, so we should just extend that, and we could even bring that down. We don't have to, you know, for, even, I'm not saying it's going to be $2 million, but if we add $2 million with, if we find other projects that we want to do this, we could do a five-year bond for, for stable, you know, you don't want, you don't want to spike that number up. So we're coming to some ends on some of these bond payments, so.
Mr. Chair, has the location been determined, or all of that is still in play?
We are looking at the, where the jail is, the south side of that plot. If I may, just bring up a couple more things. You, you'd asked, or there was a question about where the current impound building is, what we call the impound building, impound lot. That is just east of what is Tweetin's Refrigeration right now.
Or that Becker County extension.
And, you know, we, going back, I do just want to remind you that when we sold minimum security building, I am going to remind you, it was earmarked, that money was earmarked, or this building, over $500,000. So.
All right. So any more questions for Todd about the impound feasibility?
I have.
Oh, you got one more?
So I got, I got one comment, then, Todd. So you're going to, your new building then will be $500,000.
It didn't say it was going to pay for it.
Does it go towards it, either? Go ahead, Todd.
That's right. So I spoke with the, the company that gave us the spec sheet for the building this morning, and he had an idea of, we're looking out into the future here. I, I'm not a construction manager. I have sheriff duties that I have to continue doing. There's nobody in my office that has time to put toward this building full-time. And again, we've been, we've been talking about this a long time. When speaking to the individual this morning, that person said that he, or whoever, with the, just the spec sheet we have for the building, that person would be able to subcontract the plumbing and electrical and whatever else. I don't know if the board wants to move forward that way. We also have used a, an architect company, Clan McCarthy. We could reach out to them to get this process moving more quickly. I'm looking at recommendation from the board.
We just, we discussed this in committee a little bit. I don't think we came to any conclusion, though, did we? We didn't.
So I think it goes through committee, and
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say I'm, I'm on board with moving forward. I just don't know what that looks like. So I, I mean, I think before we can make any decisions, I would like to have
Well, I think the next step is to kind of get, show, show the full board, maybe a little 15-minute work session, 20-minute work session at a board, at a board meeting at the end, saying, this is what, this is what the building looks like, show what the layout is, and saying, these are our options to get there.
Yep.
Is the board comfortable moving to move forward on this building for approximately this amount of money? And if we're not, you know, we just have, you have to be, we have to be aware of how much this is going to cost us going into it. You don't want to move all these forward and say, oh, I didn't know it was going to cost that much. So, and then if we're comfortable with that, then we decide which avenue, if you want to hire an architect, or a subcontractor, a construction manager, or if you want a, how you want to bid that. But we have to bid it, have to put it out for bids to be equally fair, or somehow put out requests for proposals. I don't know how you would go about that without our bid number, so.
Can we plan that for the next board? Or would we not be ready for it?
I don't know if you'd be ready, because I think you're, you won't be here. But I was just thinking. I was just going to say, I, I think what you're asking, too, is for some direction as far as whether that be an architect or a construction manager to put these plans together, correct?
Yes, that, or that, go that road, yes.
I don't know that I can
A construction manager is kind of gives you the, what, what the cost would be, what the, what the maximum cost would be for this building, and they put it out.
Right.
Kind of like we, we did that with, you know, the highway and the
But I, I think
They have specs.
Correct. And I, I think what you're saying is that you're probably not in the position to put all of this together.
Well, again, it takes time.
Well
And I, I expected that I would be further ahead than, than what I am today, and I'm not. And again, moving, we would like to get, like to get it done as soon as possible. It's not, I mean, is it an emergency? Probably not, but it would be really nice to get our equipment in one place, sooner than later.
I think the other thing, too, is ask, asking Mary or administration to see what the funding route will be if, for this, too, to see, because I think interest rates are coming, have come down. I think a small loan like this would be very attractive, too. And maybe we don't need to bond for it, maybe we just go to a local bank, and might, might be as, I don't even know.
Yeah.
But I know that's Buffalo, Buffalo Red, when they did it, they got a local bank to borrow money, and it was unheard of interest, how, that was during a different time, of course, but it was like unheard of low dollar amount, so.
So, so you won't be here next board, you'll be here the, first board meeting in March?
I, I looked at, or I thought about the calendar. I, I will be here for the next meeting.
I think the next meeting, we just need to move forward. If the board's okay with a dollar amount, up to a dollar amount on, for this building, something like that, or, or give a general consensus that we're comfortable with this, and maybe Mary and Carrie can tell us how we can fund that, if we can fund that through payments starting after that bond payment is finished, you know? So if we build it in, say it's built in fall, winter of, and finished in '25, '26, if we can start paying that back and, when that bond payment comes out. I think the last year, it reduces by about $100,000. The payment goes from $550,000 to $4,000 something. So it does drop that last payment, so we don't have an influx of property tax on that when it does come to. That's what I'd like to see. I don't know if the rest of the board is kind of
Yeah, I, I would like that, too. If we can do that by the next board meeting, that'd be great.
And what do you need from me, just a
We kind of need a somewhat idea ballpark of the total cost. I mean, if you, or, and who, who we'd be going with, if they haven't, if you have a construction manager that you have in mind, or not, and how that, and how that would play out. I think that might have to just be vetted at committee a little bit, anyway.
So we could have a committee
I guess, you know, is, is the board, the board sees a need, I think, that's the first question. Does the board see a need? I mean, Sheriff Glander can show that he's got machinery and equipment in how many different spots, do you think?
At one time, eight locations.
Eight locations?
Yeah. I see the need. I mean, I think, I, I understand the importance of it being in one location. You know, if we have a disaster and we're sending deputies in eight different directions to get equipment, or whatever it might be, that's, that's not feasible. So I, I, I believe we do have a need. We just have to figure out how to get there.
In the past, we were, we thought this would be an under, under a million-dollar building in the past, and that's where, and now it's not. Say the dimensions of it again?
80 by 200.
80 by 200, full concrete, heated sprinklers, bathroom, one bathroom, a workstation, not a work, not an office, just a spot that you can plug in a computer to, to check
Two bathrooms, one for the people coming in from the partition area, and one for the secure side.
Yeah. There'll be a secure area for, for
And then, so do, if we need to have a committee meeting, is it okay if Todd does that before?
So an 80 by 200, I'm just, now, if we want to go full-out steel, you know, steel building with, I mean, if you want to go that route, it's, we're looking at, and this included, this included a lot of expense that probably we could shave down, but that, that quote from McGough was $4 million.
Mm-hmm.
And that was dirt, a lot of dirt work, contingencies. I don't know how they could get a lot of that, but I, I think they could shave that down some, but I, I, we just, at committee, thought
Yeah, that's all I
I don't think we need that type of building for a, a storage, even heated storage. So, but I think the board has time, you know, now, if you agree or disagree, I would like to just see a, maybe stick-built, but maybe pole-building, either way. I mean, I stick-built my little shop. It's not that big, and
I like stick, poles in the ground, I like concrete in the ground. And it's not that much more to pour shallow footing, because that, it's all sand out there.
Yeah.
I don't like, poles rot off. I don't like spending that kind of money on something that's going to
I don't think a stick-built building will cost that much
It's not that much more money. I didn't, I did mine that way. I don't, I don't have any poles. We, we poured a footing, and, and it's all stick-built. So I don't know. If we're going to spend money, I, I would like to see something that's going to last, so.
Well, I think either one of those are 50, 50-year building. I mean, look at Pelican Watershed, and, and, you know, that's still a solid building. It doesn't look the greatest, probably, but that's 50 years old already. So it's a, even a pole building's a 50-year building.
Yeah, they don't move much, but the poles do, they rot right off at ground level. That's what they do. Wood and dirt don't mix.
All right, so the consensus is we're going to
So we're, we're comfortable with moving forward with, with, we're committed that, is the board committed to doing this project in the next three to nine months, three to three months to a year?
Yes. So, and if you need, if you need to call a committee meeting before the next board meeting, then just do it.
We will.
Yeah.
I already got a notice here.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yep.
I, I know periodically I've brought up the idea, and I'm going to say this before, I know you're not in favor of this, but looking at alternative options, too, out at the landfill, shifting buildings and such out there. So I just want some direction from this board, if you want me to, you know, only look at this plan, or what would you like from that?
I, I think it would be good for us to have all options, and then we can hear all sides and make a decision from there.
I kind of like it, the location where he's asking. Well, for one thing, it's all sand there. It's a lot easier to build there than it is at the landfill. And if he's in, if he needs to get a piece of equipment in an emergency, that's a quicker option, I think, right there, and easier, and so
Yeah, there's, I mean, I think, I think you could look at it. Might not take long to look at it, but the, another negative at the landfill, you got the train, you're on the wrong side of the train tracks, if in emergency.
Benny, I think you brought that up before.
But at a minimum, it will be cheaper to build there at, on that sand than in that
At the jail?
At, at landfill. It's a completely different
Well, the only, and the other positive that I see is, obviously, you have the jail staff, they're 24/7, you know, monitoring. I mean, you have impound, and it, I mean, I see that site more secure for that type, but
Yeah, and, and how this came up with the hazardous waste building, you know, some questions have come up as far as whether or not that's up to specs of what's required, and that building is sitting out there, and, you know, potentially, you could, I, again, I don't know if this is even a possibility, but it came up, you know, is that a feasible location for what he's asking for? And again, I, I want to say that with the understanding that you're not supportive of that, because you've made that pretty clear, but
What building is not?
The hazardous
The hazardous, the, the one that, Sandy's not here, the one that she
Sandy, yeah, we're just saying, go
You mean the one way over in the
Yes.
And, if I may, Richard and Carrie, you brought up some of the reasons why I don't, and I understand that is, you know, county property as well. I, I look at the distance from, as long as we're going to be at the sheriff's office, the distance to go to the landfill or transfer station compared to the jail, and then, like Commissioner Nelson said, having somebody occupying that space 24/7 with the corrections staff, and then just access to going in through the gate, takes additional time, going, you know, back to where the, that hazardous waste building is. I just think the ideal place is at the jail site.
Yeah, it's on a state highway. It's, yeah, it's, that's the best place for it, you know, as far as, I think, for emergencies, you know, that
I guess I wasn't aware of the shortcomings of that building.
I just learned this, like, in the nest. I don't know if it was yesterday or Friday. It was very recent. But again, I just wanted to give you, you know, all the, all the options.
And maybe that's something that can be figured out at the committee level, have more conversation if the committee feels like this is
Yeah, I was just looking for a direction. If you don't want me to pursue that, I don't need to, but
Think you touch on it, for sure. I, I do think there is enough negatives for that spot, but, I mean, it should look, I mean, it should be looked at.
I, so I think the board's saying is just look at it, what possibly, maybe not possibly,
Well, what, what other uses? I mean, we can start
Or what, or maybe something else, yeah.
Yeah. Like I talked about with the domino effect, you look at one, and then it kind of rolls in, into the next.
All right. Any, any other discussion on the feasibility? All right, Todd, you have another
Yes, number nine is a purchase request. We need to upgrade our Celebrite computer. A few years ago, we received Celebrite equipment, which is equipment used to look through cellphones for serious crimes such as child-related crimes, serious offenses, homicide, you know, of course, the bigger cases. That computer is coming to the end of life, so we are looking at purchasing a workstation through Samory, which is a low quota, or it's the low quota of $5,908 compared to, well, as high as $18,000, but $78.95 would be the closest that we found. Again, this is, the one we have is not able to keep up to what we currently have, and this is in our budget. And this is in our budget.
I'll make a motion to approve up to five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eight dollars for the Sumuri forensic workstation.
I'll second.
So a motion by Erica, second by Barry, do we have any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, this is, you're, you're not paying out of this legislative funds?
Or legislative funds.
So it's not in your budget?
It is in the, we have money in the budget for this, but it it can come out of the legislative funds.
I would, on our committee, you said it was legislative.
Okay.
Yeah, I I believe you did say legislative.
I don't have those.
I believe so.
Do you, do you want me to amend my?
No, I don't need to, I just wanted to clarify this.
We'll take it out of legislative funds.
This, when we were talking about it, it was, it was not budgeted, it was legislative.
Right, yeah.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries.
And lastly, we have a twenty-twenty-four Hazard Mitigation Plan that we need approved. We have the resolution before you, zero-two-twenty-five-one-D. This is what our Deputy Emergency Manager put together. And it's in your packet. We discussed this at the committee meeting as well.
Do we have a motion to approve one D?
I'll make a motion to approve one D.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion by Erica, second by Barry, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep, do we have anything else, Carrie? We are adjourned. Yeah, I got a lot.
For who you, oh, boy. Too much politics, huh?